If you want to leave a copy for your, if you have a presentation, you want to leave a copy and then commissioners can read the entirety of it.
Sure.
Yeah, thank you. All right, I'm going to call the Kalamazoo County August 2nd, 2023 Committee of the Whole to order. First on the agenda, roll call, Clerk Cox.
Commissioner DeLu. Yes, here. Commissioner Gissler. I haven't seen. Vice Chair Pro Tem Hepler. Commissioner Mazur.
Here.
Commissioner Morales.
Present.
Vice Chair Ray. Commissioner Strubbs.
Here.
Chair Taylor.
Here.
Commissioner Wheeler.
Here.
Eight, present.
Right, and Commissioner Gissler just informed me there was an accident just down the road, but he should be here in the next minute or two. Next on the agenda is public comment. This is an opportunity for citizens to address the Board of Commissioners. Please give us your name and address, and you have up to three minutes. Thank you. Please feel free to step up.
Good afternoon. My name is Ann Cooper, and I live in Portage, Michigan. The purpose of my public comment is to share with you my strong opposition to funding the YWCA Reproductive Health Fund grant request, which is under consideration in the 2024 budget. This program, if funded, will spend $100,000 of our taxpayer dollars to pay for abortions and gender-affirming care. Most of us know what an abortion is. It is taking the life of the preborn child formed by God in the womb of his or her mother, as stated in Jeremiah, Chapter 1, Verse 5. Pro-abortion policy stands in opposition to our Declaration of Independence and our Judeo-Christian values upon which our government is established. Many of us, however, do not know a great deal about gender-affirming care. Recently, a number of articles have been published documenting testimonies of individuals who have de-transitioned from gender-affirming care. One article particularly caught my eye. De-transitioner testimony was given by Chloe Cole, and it made a powerful plea before lawmakers to stop the barbaric sex transitions of children. Chloe shared before the United States House of Representatives Judiciary Committee on July 27th, 2023, last Thursday, that the affirmation of her belief that she was born in the wrong body, followed by the administration of cross-sex hormones and mutilating surgery to her body when she was a child, had caused her lifelong irreversible harm. She said, "I hope that you will have the courage to bring this scandal to an end, so that other vulnerable teenagers, children, and young adults don't go through what I went through." Chloe is now 19, and she shared that what was diagnosed for her as gender dysphoria at age 12, she sees in retrospect was an aversion to puberty, an emotional issue. She received her first testosterone injection at age 13 and a double mastectomy at age 15. After that, her grades plunged, her mental health became worse, and she did begin to seriously consider suicide at age 16. Chloe emphasized that she needed love, compassion, and therapy to help her work through her struggles, not gender-affirming care, which simplistically supported her delusion that by transforming into a boy would solve all of my problems, quote. Wow, this is amazing testimony from Chloe Cole. My very grave concerns about the harm to our young people that could result from funding abortions and gender-affirming care with our Kalamazoo County tax dollars have been increased significantly. Please do not fund the YWCA Reproductive Health Fund. I keep thinking to myself, what if Chloe were my daughter? This article's source is lifesitenews.com. Thank you very much for the opportunity to speak today. I appreciate all of your hard work and your care and concern.
Thank you very much for your comments. Are there any other citizens wishing to address the Board of Commissioners?
Director Balcomah sent me the first draft of a grant agreement on, or about, July 27th, 2022. That was over a year ago. The draft agreement made no mention of any form of affordability requirements. On that same day, Director Balcomah provided me a letter confirming the grant that I could provide to my lender. Again, no mention of an affordability requirement. I made a few minor revisions to the grant agreement and sent it back to Director Balcomah. On or about September 13th, 2022, Director Balcomah first made mention of her opinion that at least some of the units in the project had to be affordable to residents making between 80 and 120% of AMI. Needless to say, I was surprised. Regardless, Director Balcomah and I chatted several times, and I committed to trying to work with her for some sort of reasonable accommodation. On September 21st, Director Balcomah, I'm sorry, September 21st, 2022, Director Balcomah stated in an email to me that she would like to see 10% of the units be affordable at 80% to 120% of AMI for a period of 10 years. After she sent me the manner in which to calculate a quote-unquote rent-by-bedroom limitation, it's a mishta, the income limitation, something. I sent her a great deal of language that which would accommodate her request. She went, Director Balcomah and I went through many different iterations of the grant agreement since last September, and we were not successful in finalizing a contract. On May 4th, 2023, again, this is 2023, Director Balcomah sent to me a version of the contract which completely changed what she was looking for. Long and short, she's now requiring that we income-verify our residents in compliance with the very onerous and exhaustive HUD Section 8 income verification rules. She wants HUD-level income verification at least application and annually thereafter. As I told Director Balcomah, we are a market-rate housing developer, and we are not equipped nor are we able to implement HUD Section 8-type income verification.
Can, I'm sorry, if you could wrap it up to.
Sure. I'll paraphrase. I'm sorry, I didn't really know there was a time limit. Market-rate residents can never, they can't agree to HUD Section 8 income-type verification. We never held ourselves out as a subsidized, as a provider of subsidized housing. The most heavily cited article in our application reads, is entitled, excuse me, "The Effect of New Market Rate Housing Construction on the Low-Income Housing Market." It is cited 11 times in our application. The words "market rate" are otherwise used an additional six times in our application. We sold this project to our investors and to our lenders with this grant as part of the capital stack. And regardless, as our pro forma rents sit here today, we comply with what Director Balcomah initially asked for in regards to the 80 to 120, if you consider it rent by bedroom. We're at, now we're at an impasse. Again, affordable doesn't always mean subsidized, and I would ask this commission to direct county or corporate council to work with us to move forward with the grant agreement so that we can actually receive the grant. Thank you for your time.
Thank you. If you want to leave a copy for your, if you have a presentation, you want to leave a copy, and then commissioners can read the entirety of it.
Sure.
Yeah, thank you. Thank you. Are there any other citizens wishing to address the board? See none. We will move on to your first item.
Yes, we have some recorded calls this evening.
Oh, gosh, yep. Recorded calls, let's roll.
Also, I understand that the commissioners are looking to improve DE and I within the county, but the way I see it, there already is a lot of issues with DE and I that need to be addressed, especially in the north side, as far as funding to improve the lives of our residents and especially our youth. The numbers of our youth that are underserved within Kalamazoo County remain high, and why couldn't this $100,000 go towards that? Finally, with insurance not covering this procedure as far as transgender going through the change, insurance doesn't cover this. Why should we use our tax dollars to cover this? Insurance doesn't cover it for a reason. Just because someone wants something doesn't mean they should be able to have the sex change, especially when it's been proven that it doesn't always goes successful with complications after this surgery. Yes, that could be like any other surgery, but then there's also mental anguish where suicide rates of people that go through sex changes is high. So that is why I'm in opposition, and I even plan on going door-to-door within my community, speaking out against this if it was to pass to where that would be something at the forefront of the next election. Thank you.
According to Dr. Stephen Christie, who is a medical doctor, lawyer, and author, 95% of all abortions are performed on healthy women carrying healthy babies. As he points out, giving a healthy unborn child a lethal injection is not health care. Dismembering a healthy unborn baby and suctioning it out of the mother is not health care. Just because abortion is legal doesn't make it right. Slavery was once legal too. It was abolished because it is morally wrong. Abortion is also morally wrong. I'm not passing judgment on the women who have abortions. I'm passing judgment on the act of abortion itself. Likewise, your task force on gun violence is not condemning the people who use the guns. It is condemning the act of violence itself. Both forms of killing must be stopped. This isn't a case of simply renewing a grant. The original grant of $43,900, which was awarded in April 2021 and dispersed as one payment in December 2021 and two payments in February 2022, should never have happened. That money was originally earmarked for Southwest Michigan first. The Board of Commissioners at the time rescinded it from them and reallocated it to the YWCA Reproductive Health Fund. The measure passed by a single vote. To win the deciding vote, proponents convinced one of the pro-life commissioners that a contract could be drafted stipulating that county money would not be used for abortion. Although well-intentioned, that contract ended up being purely cosmetic. Using county money to pay for non-abortion items freed up money from YWCA's other two funding sources, which could then be used for more abortions. Now the YWCA wants more than twice as much taxpayer money in 2024 for its reproductive health fund. Please don't give it to them. Thank you.
No hands are raised? All right, then, now we're up for our pension actuarial presentation. Mr. Anderson.
Testing, testing. Thank you, Mr. Chair. I am delighted to be here today from Gibber Roder Smith &amp; Company. I believe our presentation's being pulled up, and I've already forgotten Kevin, lovely lady's name. Dina, thank you, Dina, for doing this. That's not it yet, but ours has, ours is a blue cover. Oh, you're not Dina. Dina? Deena? I'm sorry, I saw you clicking away when the phone calls were coming in. I just like, why is corporate counsel running this? Deena's up there. I've, I've got a funny story while Deena's pulling this together. I was in a room like this, but it had like speakers from the ceiling and I was at a hospital, there's a major merger going on, everybody's really nervous. The attorney was before me and he was on the road, so we called in. And I'm starting my presentations and we hear him walk. And he goes to the bathroom, you hear it loud over this. It was like the voice of God speaking as we worked our way through. So I've tried to be in person whenever I can ever since that meeting. But while Deena's pulling it up, I'm thrilled to be here. It's been a number of years. I was here probably eight years ago as my guests and I don't recall any faces. Maybe you recall mine. Uh, my colleague Mike Kostchuk is not available. He's got a daughter going to college and that sort of stuff. But I'll start even before we get into the presentation by making the note that it's a delight to come to Kalamazoo County. Kalamazoo City is in a similar way. Uh, the both retirement systems are very, very well-funded. Uh, I don't have to come here and talk about how we're going to get out of a sixty percent funding hole or stuff like that, that that some, I've got clients like that. And and know that for those clients that are at that level of funding, there's a plan to get out of it is the whole thing. And we're, we're fortunate here at Kalamazoo County. We've got a program that's well-funded that provides benefit security for its members through the due diligence of county staff. Uh, and importantly, through really governance that's being done with respect to making contributions as are required. Following prudent investment practices through the Retirement Investment Committee. And also, uh, keeping the actual assumptions up to date. So I'll close with that as well. Uh, but Deena, if you could move to slide two, please, I'll give you the big picture of what we do, because I don't know the last time you saw a, an actuary in person. So from a thirty thousand foot level, what you need to keep in mind is we're mathematicians. And we combine the people, that's the demographic some information, the lower green box. Uh, the benefits, which is the blue plan provision box are turquoise, I guess. Uh, assumptions are actual assumptions. We make a lot of assumptions about when people might leave active employment, how long they might live. What what their pay increases may be. Uh, financial information, the assets of the fund and also the funding policy of the plant to come up with what's called the actual evaluation. And the hope is in the end that out of the millions and millions of calculations go into this, it's digestible for boards and for county folks to take actions and to make assessments. Oh, one more to keep on that previous slide if you could. Uh, the digital decimal information being the employer contributions, the funded status, unfunded accrued liability in the funding plan. All right, Deena, let's go forward one. So let's start with the the plan participants. Uh, and I will be relatively quick on, I've got, oh, should I speak down here? Is that better for pickup or? Okay, so I will do that. So the plan participants here show are shown for the general county. Uh, so we give you a sense from nineteen ninety-seven through two thousand and twenty-two, the valuation is done at December thirty-one of each of these years. And you can see how the population has evolved over the years. At at twelve thirty-one, two thousand and twenty-two, to the far right, the blue bar is showing roughly six hundred active members. The yellow bar shows about four hundred people are receiving benefits. And that's really important. That's why we're here today. And it's why I'm here to make sure we have money in the fund to pay for benefits for our plan recipients. So the ratio of actives to retirees in this and the general county portion of the plan is one point five. Keep that in mind as you go forward. Uh, go forward one slide, please, Deena. And here we see the mental health authority, a different graph with respect to the act, the ratio of actives to retirees. Uh, as of June, December thirty-one, twelve, two thousand and twenty-two, the big blue bar has got fifty active members, the smaller yellow bar has thirty. So our ratio is about one point six, so a similar to the county, a maturing group is what we have here. And I've got a lot of plans that are maturing, as we call it, over the state of, across the state of Michigan. A lot have ratios that are one or below. That's a more much more mature plan. So we're on the way there with these two groups. Totally expected with respect to a plan that's been around as long as as Kalamazoo County has been. If Deena would move to the next slide, we look at the road commission. And the road commission, I'm just, what am I doing here? I zoom so quickly, I went through the mental health authority. The mental health authority, I just gave you the the stats of the road commission. Mental health authority is at five actives per one retiree. Thank you, Deena, for coming back. I had dual-side covered pages. So mental health authority is is a relatively immature, younger plan. Um, so thank you, Abigail. You're paying attention. Like, what's he talking about? If we go forward to the road commission, it is similar to the, to the county in terms of the actives to the, um, to the retirees. And the really interesting thing here is to look at the yellow bar. In the previous two slides, the yellow bar was steadily increasing. Here it's steadily decreasing. And that's reflecting road commission members opting to take a lump sum at retirement instead of an annuity. When they pick a lump sum, money goes out, they go out, they're no longer in the system. So the road commission is in a similar position as the general county as far as being mature, but it's got this difference there with respect to that.
Quick question onto that. Sorry, I'll talk back here, but, um, the road commission, uh, you said take a lump sum. We don't offer that, correct? In the Kalamazoo County system or the mental health system, they don't offer lump sum payment?
It is offered, but it's, it's just the uptake is quicker in the retirement, in the road commission. They've, they've been, as I talked to the folks who prepare the valuations, they've been surprised by how much they do take that option.
So we do offer that lump sum payment still to
Yep.
every retiree that's opted into the system?
Yep. Yep. So it it gets this little difference with respect to the membership. Um, so that's, that's our employees, our active employees, our retirees. Let's move forward a slide to the provisions. I'm not going to walk through.
Commissioner Strzep.
Oh.
We can only have one mic at a time here where we don't even have anything fancy. You can walk to the bathroom. I mean, we've, you've got to stay here and you've got one at a time. So, Commissioner Strzep.
Thank you, Chair. I just have one additional question about the the three different plans between the county mental health authority and road commission. Are all three of them are defined benefit plans? So it's not a any sort of difference in them in that structure that would increase it, uh, annuity payouts?
And now I'll press, thank you. Indeed. And and here you can see they are all within the plan. We do separate valuations for each. So we'll later talk about, I'll talk about aggregated numbers, but also talk about the specific results for each one. And here you can see that they are all indeed defined benefit plans with different retirement eligibility, different benefit multipliers. They have the same final average salary. And they have the same maximum employer finance, maximum benefit. So they, they have these different, um, conditions that have been negotiated over the years, but yes, it's a pure defined benefit plan. And I'll talk about, um, it's great to come to Kalamazoo County because I can talk about how great defined benefit plans are. I've consulted with defined contribution too. It's got its place. But, uh, we're working the way defined benefit plan should here. So like I said, I'm not going to go over this, but this is some detail with the provisions. So I said, we combine the people, the provisions, and the next slide, I hope will show us the assumptions. And as I, as I led off with, we've had real prudent governance here at Kalamazoo County with respect to making the contributions, but also with respect to the assumptions, we perform at what's called an experience study every five years to review the assumptions. The next one will happen next year, reflecting experience to the end of this year. And it's really, really important to do that so that you don't have assumptions getting out of whack. And I should comment that Kalamazoo County is doing, doing this before. Uh, legislator in Michigan, legislature in Michigan said, you have to do this every five years. We were already doing this as part of a regular process. Uh, you don't want to have your assumptions be too aggressive. You don't want them to be too soft. You want to be like Goldilocks, just right. We're trying to get in our calculations. Are we getting to the right point there where when a person is going to receive that benefit, there's money there for them to get that? One small example, uh, if we had a mortality table that's out of date and we say John Q. Kalamazoo is going to live till age eighty-five, but everybody lives till ninety, well, we haven't funded that five years of benefit. So that's why it's really important we do that. And I guess I've, I've started right into the third, uh, assumption here, the mortality assumption, which important to know is based on the most recent table, which is what we do with our experience studies based on public plan experience. So it includes separate rates for general employees, public safety employees. We'll be looking at all these assumptions, as I said, next year. The assumed investment return is the, uh, the biggest one when we are overfunded as we are. Uh, we've got a lot of assets and if we miss that bogey by a certain amount or overshoot it, it has big impacts on what the plan is able to pay. So I'll talk about that a little bit more. And then lastly, any unfunded or overfunded liabilities are financed over a ten-year period. That's been the whole time I've been at Kalamazoo, last eleven years. Uh, a lot of places I have to talk about the first word there, unfunded. We could cross that out here. We're overfunded and we'll talk about that in a second. Continue next slide. The most important assumption is the investment return. This is just to give you a sense for how these have changed during this millennium. I always start this chart by starting at the far left in the beginning of this, of this millennium. If you were assuming eight percent, that's the number in the very middle there, that was the median and that blue bar is reflecting the, the amount of plans in the National Association of State Retirement Associates and administrators, uh, survey that we're using eight percent. You were fully in the mainstream. There were some who were, as you look up or right, eight and a half percent above eight and a half percent. Nobody was at seven. And that eight percent rate continued for the first decade of this millennium. Just was kind of like, yeah, that's a regular assumption. But you can see as you go past two thousand and ten, that blue bar goes up to the right and out, it's no longer anybody assuming eight percent anymore. It's reflecting the changes in the investment markets that occurred after two thousand and eight. Uh, the, the decrease in, in interest rates that, uh, where bonds were not getting quite the impact that used to. And so when we get way to the right, the median now is seven percent. We have nobody at eight. We've got some at seven and a half to eight percent in between there. Those might be state legislated, um, by the, by the state legislatures. And at the bottom, some below six and a half. What's happened in this chart is the steady movement up into the right reflecting a decrease in the assumed rate of return. And it's kind of hit a stopping point. We had great years for investments, as you might remember, nineteen, twenty and two thousand and twenty-one. Two thousand and twenty-two was a poor year and all the forward-looking investment, um, expectations of investment consultants decreased. So, uh, we're, we're not, we might see a change here. We're not going to see people increasing the assumptions, but at this point, it looks like the assumption is of seven point two five is still.
I ask you, and that the investments of the two thousand and twenty-two, uh, year decreasing across the board for all plans, all different, um, assumptions. Uh, that in my mind is not, I mean, if you look at the Dow Jones, you look at the stock, you look at the NASDAQ, you look at all the investments, they've actually increased in value. It's the, um, decrease. And if I'm wrong, correct me if I'm wrong, but the decrease in a lot of those funds has to do with the inversion of the interest rates, correct? The, the, when, when, when you, when you've got capital or you've got long-term bonds at a certain percentage as part of your portfolio. And then all of a sudden you're stuck at three years of that percentage. And then, you know, rates go up to five and a half, that cash out for that is going to be much lower. So that's going to lower your artificially, in my mind, lower your actual portfolio.
Yeah, thanks for the comment because I, I should sort of state at the very start, I am not an investment guy. I'm not the guy who tell you what's going on, but I can say that what you're saying is exactly on point for bonds. And what was different about two thousand and twenty-two was that you couldn't hide anywhere. I believe a lot of equity classes decreased as well. That's what my advisor tells me. It's like, this is awful. And I see it across all my clients who are invested in equities and bonds across the, you know, private equity, et cetera. So two thousand and twenty-two is just a bad, bad year in terms of of what was going on. But again, what we do as actuaries, we look to the long term. So, um, I'm not going to overreact to two thousand and twenty-two. I'm not going to overreact to, uh, nineteen, twenty and twenty-one, great years. Over long, the long term, this is such a long-term, um, long tails on our benefit payments. We've got a hundred years out. We have people who are hired today who will still be receiving benefits. It becomes important to have that view, but, but that's a great point. So this is just a little bit on the investment return assumption. The next slide is a little actual one-on-one. You could tell I'm a mathematician. We like, uh, letters, not numbers. The one truly mathematical slide in this deck. This is such an easy equation. It's basically saying your contribution C plus your investment income B equal, or I, geez, equal your benefits B plus your expenses E. Your expenses are a really low portion uh, in our managed plans. We've got defined benefit plans. We've got hundreds of millions of dollars in assets. That becomes a really small thing. So it's really a trade-off on the benefits that have been negotiated and are defined as Commissioner Strzep noted. We've got this defined benefit. We know the people. We've gotten a sense for how long they're going to live. How are we going to pay for that? And you can pay for it in two ways. Uh, you can pay for it in contributions and in investment income. The Kalamazoo County being overfunded is probably like a lot of my plans. I haven't heard it said here at the county, but the expectation is to pay two-thirds of the benefits, maybe three-fourths of the benefits from investment income. So you make the contribution, invest it prudently, which as we've done, and you're able to take advantage of that financial strength of having a defined benefit plan. If you don't make the contributions, if you don't investment right, uh, you know, you're going to run into the, the funding problems we've seen, which we don't have here. So the benefits define depend on the plan provisions that I just barely touched on and the actual experience of people. How long do people work? How long do they live? How long, what are their pay increases? That's for us now. So the benefits are defined, they will grow as they grow, the contributions in the short run. Yeah, we could talk about assumptions and hey, let's use a different mortality basis, let's do a different interest rate. But in the long run, it's really a measure of how long do those people live and where the benefits that get paid to them. Uh, so you, it takes that, all those assumptions out of it, and ultimately it's going to depend on that investment income, the level of benefits and how the people live as we go through the experience. Continuing on the next slide, again, just a reminder of our process. So this is another way of what I started with. I wanted to give you a little data in total for Kalamazoo County. We have seventeen hundred and fifty-six members as of December thirty-one, two thousand and twenty-two. We have, I could look at my page, two hundred and forty-eight million assets and it's a smooth value. We'll talk about market and smooth value in a little bit. But that's how we fund the plan, using what's called a smooth value, which I'll talk about. And you say our provisions, our cost method, our assumptions all come into our actual evaluation. The next page will talk about the liabilities. And this is what's called the present value of future benefits in millions. Present value of future benefits is, is taking this information. We've got active employees, we're projecting them out into time they retire, et cetera, bringing all those cash flows back to today. Uh, it gives you a one big figure in terms of what we're on the hook for our current participants as of the valuation date. So that's our, our entire circle there, present value of future benefits, two hundred and fifty-two million. We have an accrued liability, which is that portion of that present value that's been earned already. So the actives have earned twenty years out of their thirty-year career. The retirees have earned all their service. That is two hundred and twenty-three million. And again, this is for all three groups combined. We then break it into what are the costs for the future? The future normal cost consists of, of an amount for this year, which is the normal cost of five million. And our future normal cost beyond that for future years is twenty-four million.
It's, I'm sorry to interrupt again, um, that the projected, are, are you projecting all employees or just vested employees, like a higher date? Or is it once they become vested?
Great question. Thank you for that. It is every single employee who's on the rolls as of the valuation date. So we've got people who are active. Best are not vested. We have people who are retired and we also have people who have left county employment but have a benefit in the future, invested benefit in the future.
So of those employees, we're assuming that every single one of them will be vested at some point of the new hires?
If we had a hundred percent, uh, assumption with respect to that, we do have a termination assumption that's higher in the initial years, especially at mental health authority, we've seen a lot of people, they come in and they leave before they're even vested.
You do have a termination assumption. Okay, thank you.
Absolutely. Maybe I'm going too quickly, but yeah, we've got, uh, assumptions for termination if you quit. Uh, whether you've vested it or not, uh, retirement, disability, uh, mortality, those are the main big ones and assumptions with respect to pay increases. And, um, obviously our investment turn assumption as well. So, yeah, all baked into here. Like I said, millions and millions of calculations come down to these four numbers. Next slide, please. So the four numbers, uh, you might recall, there's our present day future, or I'm sorry, there's our actual value of assets. Two hundred and forty-eight million. I, I footnote of this just because it looks like the same. It's actually two forty-seven point eight million in two thousand and twenty-two is two forty-eight point zero. Uh, our assets didn't move because we smoothed the experience in two thousand and twenty-two, which I will talk about the next slide. Our total accrued liability, that was two twenty-three, I said last, uh, slide. Up from two hundred and fourteen million the year before, we expect this to grow because of that normal cost piece that I mentioned that is earned each and every year, the present value of the benefit earned in a year, some five million bucks is adding to that. And then we, as we get folks closer to retirement, this actual accrue, accrued liability will generally increase. The unfunded accrued liability, which for us is an overfunded, so it's a negative amount. Uh, decrease from thirty-four million over funding to twenty-five million over funding, just, just the simple math, those first two numbers, simple subtraction. And then our contribution, you might say, we're over a hundred percent funded. Why do we have a contribution? It's again, that normal cost piece. So we have three point seven million left after amortizing or overfunding that's due as a contribution this year, up to two point four million last year. And there's a breakdown, uh, in sub-bullet two, that's the road commission has no contribution, mental health, the one point four and the general county, two point three. Lastly, the funded ratio. I like to talk to my boards and, and I say when you're at your cocktail party is talking about how well your fund is planted, how well funded your plan is. I would go to the funded ratio on the actuarial basis. That's how we're calculating contributions. So a hundred and eleven percent, uh, this year down from a hundred fifteen point eight on a market value basis. We had the, the markets gyrating as they did. We had a drop from a hundred twenty-nine, a hundred twenty-eight point eight percent to a hundred three percent. But we don't fund on that basis. We fund on the actual basis, if that's all clear. Oh, good. Deena is, is hearing me from the next room. Let's move on to this, the smoothing. So this is how we smooth the assets, just really briefly here. We start up with the actual, uh, investment return in two thousand and twenty-two, negative thirty-four point three million dollars. We compare that to what we assumed. We assumed we'd earned seven point two five percent. So wasn't we assumed zero? We, we were expecting to earn seventeen million dollars. So you take the actual investment return, positive or negative, less what you assumed, and you get the gain or So you take the actual investment return, positive or negative, less what you assumed, and you get the gain or loss for this year to be phased in fifty one point eight million dollars. Divide that by five and you can see it go in increments down the diagonal there, ten point three six nine million dollars this year and each of the next few years. This is just a way of smoothing out the contribution. We'd like to have our contribution be as level as we can make it. So this is one of the ways that we do it. That amortization is another way. And just in terms of not having to have our employers chase after a contribution that bounces up and down. Real quick on this one, so staying in twenty twenty two column of the phase and recognition, the current year, that negative ten point three six nine million I mentioned. The fourth prior year was our last bad year, six point three four negative. But in between were those three great years I talked about. We had them all together. We get a total recognized a loss of five point six seven six million dollars based on, which is a small piece of the whole two hundred forty eight million dollar amount that we had at the beginning of the year. We expect to have losses in the future that are deferred, just as the table plays out. If I presented last year, all these numbers, well, I guess the the fourth prior year or third prior year would have been negative. And all these would have been, we'd expect gains in the future. So that just reflects that that change where you had a a poor investment year. Now we've got losses instead of gains being faced it. Also gives you a sense for where the contribution might go. If we earned the the rate exactly at seven point two five percent. Well, then next year, well, actually, next year, it looks like we have a small gain that will come in six hundred seventy million dollars. Or thousand dollars. Sorry, get my get my basis right. All right, continuing, I'm going to wrap it up and hopefully really quickly, but next slide is talking about market assets versus the the smooth assets. So you can see the market assets increase two hundred three point seven, two hundred thirty one, two forty one, two seven, and then drop in twenty twenty two, that top line. The rate of return is what I've just talked about in the prior slide. The actual value of assets, you don't see that drop, and we'll show this graphically in the next page, but the rate of return for the actual basis is in a much more narrow range, again, to get us to funding on a more level basis to the extent we level out those changes in in the asset returns. So we're not bouncing around. Next slide shows this graphically for those who like the graph. The M is showing the market value rate of return. Just bouncing around, as I said in the previous pages and the yellow, the yellow M, and then there's a green that's much more level. It's hard to see, but there's a green line going through there as well. Keep it or actual rate more steady for contribution stability.
So sorry to interrupt again, going back to the page and market value of assets, rate of return, actuarial value and of assets. So we earned four point nine percent in twenty twenty two on our investments. But we lost in the market value of assets close to forty five million dollars, correct?
I I will change it to be we we lost, it's the the market rate was negative twelve point seven. That's what we lost on an actuarial basis for contribution is four point nine. So yeah, the thirty four million dollars ties that negative twelve on a market basis, but for contribution purposes and for funded status purposes, we actually increased four point nine. So it's just, again, a way of the second line down, once we get back there with the rate of return was negative, positive, positive, negative for market. With the actual rate of return, it's it's in a range from four point nine percent to ten point eight percent. Great, thank you. Appreciate the questions and please more as as we go along. Okay, so that is the primary results. I'm going to talk really quickly about something that might come up at your cocktail parties if we go forward to seventeen. And I'm serious because people will say, hey, you're a county commissioner, you have a pension plan, and I just read an article in the paper that said, you know, and let's just use Kalamazoo County's numbers. You say you're a hundred and eleven percent funded, but on them, this article says on a more realistic basis, you're eighty percent funded. I guarantee you, if you have somebody who's read papers after this new requirement comes in, you will you will get that question. I get it, of course, the actual word. But we're going to be required in the next valuation to reflect what's called a low default risk obligation measure. LD ROM, we have to calculate liabilities based on a discount rate that's lower, basically. And I'll show you what that means. It intends to show these liabilities for a plan without being exposed to investment risk. I just talked about. We have this great investment pool. We're paying most of the benefits out of the investment return that we have. But this is saying we don't take any investment risk. This is what the liabilities would look like, which, again, we would not fund the plan on this basis. So the next slide, please. Actually, go even one more. That's just showing rates dropping. So this is just walk around numbers for what it might look for the Kalamazoo County retirement system. Our accrued liability, we talked about earlier, two hundred twenty three million. That's the number we're funding to. This LD ROM number approximately three hundred million at a four point one percent discount rate. That's what we'll have to show in the in the report next year, the number next year based on a lower discount rate. And then folks can look at this eighty million dollar difference and say, well, that's a projected savings from our reasonable investment strategy or it's the amount of investment risk being taken. But it will be a headline guarantee. You'll see articles that say, just just remember, state X says they're one hundred and one percent funded. On a more realistic measure, they're eighty percent, but you will see that. Doesn't matter. And at your cocktail party, as you can say, our funding is fine. We're, you know, whatever the result is as of the most recent valuation date, we're one hundred eleven percent funded. So just something for you to be aware of as we go along. And again, the next slide just sums this section up. It's not going to impact any of the measures that I'm going to talk to you about. It'll be in my report. But our contributions are unfunded crude liability, our funded ratio, that's all going to be based on our smooth assets that I've been talking about. I'm going to close. This is the end, the last three slides. And I'm just going to use funded status to to again, drive home how well funded the plan is. And and indeed, you look at these these slides, and they're all going to be very similar. The general county portion of the plan on an actual value of assets basis, you can see the funded ratios, the gold line. It dipped down to one hundred and three percent back in two thousand twelve or so, but it's been between one hundred and nine percent most recently to one hundred and thirty four percent at some point, always above a hundred percent. And and how does this happen? You know, I've got other clients that say, do you have any clients over a hundred percent funded? I said, yeah, yeah, there's county plan in West Michigan that is that way. This is the general county. The next page is the mental health authority, which has the same type of, you know, being above a hundred percent all the time. I'll just note here, all those purples, I don't see that a lot of other clients. That's that's a overfunded status. The unfunded liability is below zero, as we've talked. And lastly, the road commission is similar. So the my closing comment is what I opened with, the systems in an enviable position because of the way that the plan is being managed, the governance of the plan, we use recent assumptions, we have a great investment prudent investment policy that Rick has done a great job with the money. And what was the third one? Oh, and we make the contributions, which is the most important thing. So with that, I welcome any questions.
Questions from commissioners? I have one question. It said, I think it was page like seven or no page like twelve eighteen, I'm not sure. But you talked about your the contribution going from two point four million to three point seven million. Is that that going to be reflected in next year's budget? Then I guess maybe it's a question for Kevin. Would that be an increase in our contribution rate or would that come from our employees' benefit fund or is that baked into our fringe rate? I would need time with staff to go back and so we'll we'll answer that question. We'll follow up with you. No problem. And I guess just to let commissioners know, we are in a very enviable position. You do not see defined benefit plans that are run by public municipalities that are a hundred percent funded. And it's because we have a commitment to make those contributions, take conservative assumptions. And I hope we, as a board, continue to do that and continue to fund this plan because if you get, let this get away from you, it can really eat into your appropriations. Thank you.
Thank you all very much. It's great to see you today.
All right, next on the agenda is the audit, annual comprehensive financial presentation, Paul Matts.
Good afternoon. An auditor at an actuary in the same afternoon, you are a courageous group.
It's a party.
You opened yourself up for this. I have one actuary and auditor joke, and I'll tell it right now. An auditor and a actuary are pretty much identical. And they are people that didn't have the personality to be accountants.
Okay, well, we'll try not to. We appreciate you. Thank you very much for the presentation.
You know, not not offense can be taken. I can't tell you how many presentations I've done that as I stand up, the audience clears out, so. No offense taken. So yeah, good afternoon. I am here to share the results of the audit for the year ended December thirty one of twenty twenty two. I do want to take a minute just to thank, you know, management and the staff that we worked with during the audit process. It's probably not a surprise to you that the audit is not the most enjoyable thing that I think staff deal with during the year. But we do receive good cooperation and support throughout the audit, so we are very appreciative of that. Instead of going page by page through the two hundred and thirty some pages, we have just a brief PowerPoint presentation that I wanted to cover with some highlights. If you want to move to the next slide, please. So overall, the goal of our audit is to make sure that the financial statements are accurately stated in all material respects. We want them to be useful for the board as part of your decision making processes. And to do so, you're going to want to have accurate financial information on that basis. As part of the audit this year, as noted on the on the slide, we issued the unmodified or clean audit opinion. That is the opinion that you want to achieve during the audit process. That yes, we do believe these are accurately stated financial statements, and that's essentially the best opinion. The highest opinion that we can give is that clean, unmodified audit opinion. Moving to the next slide, you know, as part of the audit as well, we look at the system of internal controls, the processes. Are there segregation of duties taking place, reviews and approvals that take place? And where we would identify what it we consider to be audit findings, we would have to share those as part of the communications as well. And we did identify a couple of items this year, which I've got noted on this slide. And it's really sort of three separate but very related items related to there were some material audit adjustments that we identified during the audit this year. I will tell you that is not unusual. You know, it is our job as auditors, as I said, to make sure the financial statements are accurately stated. With a county this size and with much going on, you know, it's not unusual that there are audit adjustments identified as part of the process. But whenever we have those, we're required to communicate those within an audit finding. And then the other two relate to really reconciliations, one that focused on cash and investments specifically. There were some challenges in getting the accounts, the cash and investment accounts fully reconciled with all of those reconciliations compared to what was reported on the general ledger. And then just some subsidiary ledgers. So what those really are are supporting reconciliations to the amounts that are reported at the end of the year. You want to have, you know, if if you have a question on, well, what make up our accounts receivable? There should be a listing or a ledger or a reconciliation that helps support those balances. And there were certain instances where the reconciliations were not initially correct. They did not initially agree to the general ledger. So again, we we needed to share those part of this communication as well. The best recommendation I can give is that all of the reconciliations, certainly the cash and the investments, that they're done timely. They're done monthly and that they're subject to an independent review and approval process. Those are really some of the key items that I would consider as part of the process regarding those audit items. Are there any questions on those specifically before I move into some of the some of the numbers?
Questions from commissioners? I have one quest. Sorry, I'm trying not to stand back here so it doesn't jump at me. But the material audit adjustments, you said that's that's not uncommon for a county our size. Is it? Are there other counties that receive those same things pretty regularly?
Yes, that is correct. You know, certainly there were some relatively significant dollar amounts within those adjustments. But I would say of the audit findings that we issue in audit finding related to audit adjustments is the most common one that we issue for counties or other governments of of this type.
And I'll probably get to those numbers of those write offs and and at the end, but I appreciate that.
All right, if you can move to the next slide, please. So again, the financial statements, it's called an annual comprehensive financial report, and it certainly is comprehensive, again, over two hundred and thirty some pages. There are a couple of items that I wanted to just mention within that report that I maybe would want to draw your attention to if you do want to spend a few additional minutes looking at it. One of them is the transmittal letter that's early on in the in the financial report. It it goes beyond the numbers a little bit. It talks a little bit more about with the accomplishments, what was, you know, accomplished with the use of the funds during the year. So it's not just, you know, number after number after number, but it goes a little bit beyond that. And there's some information on, you know, general financial conditions, some awards and acknowledgements. The county does submit its financial report to the Government Finance Officers Association and receives a certificate of excellence in financial reporting every year. So that's again, something that's acknowledged within that transmittal letter. The next item that I wanted to mention is the management's discussion and analysis. This follows shortly after the transmittal letter. If you want to flip to the next slide, I think it's got the specific pages on there. Again, a nice high level summary here. This one does focus more on the financial results. There's comparative information between the current and prior years, so you can see information on fluctuations and trends. Management provides a lot of good narrative in that document. So again, you know, ten pages or so that you can get a really good, high level understanding of the financial results for the year. On the next slide, I wanted to focus just a little bit on the general fund and its fund balance change during the year and the fund balance at the end of the year. There is about forty three point two million in fund balance that the county had at the end of the year. There is about two point five million of that that's sort of set aside related to budget stabilization. And the unassigned balance, which is essentially the piece that has does not have other strings attached to it was about thirty nine million, six hundred and ninety six thousand at the end of the year. There was a decrease in fund balance for the year of about two point nine million dollars to get to that end of year balance. But that was certainly a favorable variance compared to the final amended budget projected reduction in fund balance.
And just so commissioners are aware, a large portion of that two point nine million dollar reduction was for the twelve and a half million dollar building that we purchased.
Next slide, I think I just have a couple of more numbers and percentages for you. Sometimes boards are interested in, you know, what is our ending fund balance as a percentage of our expenditures and transfers out during the year? It's at about forty nine point eight percent for the general fund. Another way of thinking about that is there's about six months worth of expenses in the ending fund balance. If you want to take that unassigned piece specifically, it's about six point five months of expenditures in the ending fund balance. Pretty common, you know, and keep in mind, you know, that that funding has to hold you over for a period of time until, you know, property taxes and the likes are to come in for for twenty twenty three.
But can I ask you a quick question on that? That fifty four point three percent, how does that compare to other municipalities and what is GASP recommended?
So it it is amazing. I have some where it's about one percent and I have some where it's in the hundreds of percentages. So it very much does depend. I would say for the county governments, that's a comfortable number. It's a similar number. The general recommendation that we typically will issue is that there's at least two months of expenditures in the ending fund balance. And if I were certainly going to lean on one direction, it would be tending to have a little bit more than that cushion. But the minimum recommendation is sort of that two month metric.
So the two months, that would be about sixteen percent, seventeen percent. That's the minimum recommendation.
Correct. And again, I believe the county has a fund balance policy as well, which I believe, you know, the
Twenty to twenty five.
Yeah, yeah. Next slide, please. I guess that's it. So if there's any questions, you know, or an area like Mike might like me to share a little bit more detail, I would be happy to do so. But hopefully, that's the high level version this afternoon.
Any questions from commissioners? No. Well, thank you very much. I appreciate it.
Thank you all. Have a great afternoon.
I will make a comment. I do of those three audit comments that are before us. I would hope that, you know, and I've talked to administration and we're going to make sure that those aren't there next year. I do feel confident and the reconciliation has been of investment reports has been cleared up. I think that we're on track there to get adequate monthly reports from this point going forward. I think that we're on track there to get adequate monthly reports from this point going forward. And the ability to reconcile all of our accounts, it's going to be paramount that we get that done earlier and we're not scrambling in January again this year, but thank you very much.
Thank you, I will also just note, you know, typically there are not audit findings, so I am agree in agreement that that's probably likely to get corrected over the next year. This was an unusual situation, historically, we've had really good success, so I look forward to next year and hoping to see things resolved, thank you.
We will have them cleaned up. Next on the agenda. Is, gosh, I went too far into the details here, road commission presentation, Joanna.
All right, we got actuaries, auditors and infrastructure tonight, so. Dina, appreciate you bringing up the this slide deck and thank you for the opportunity to be here again. All of you have received our twenty twenty two annual report, so I'll very briefly cover that. But first I want to ensure that our road commissioners that are present here today are introduced. We have our chair commissioner Tom Brennan, we have our vice chair commissioner David Plowski, as well as member Larry Stayhauer here this evening, so next slide. All right, so there's our professional photo of our road commissioners, which are appointed by the county commission. Again, as already mentioned, three of our commissioners are here today, next slide. So I'm just going to highlight very briefly, thank you, Dina, the facts and figures that were already in this annual report. But in case you didn't know or weren't aware, we do manage and consider ourselves the public works arm of our township partners. Understanding that we have a network of roads, so we work within our villages and cities and that connectivity across the county as well as our neighboring counties. So we always look to that network and moveability for all of our road users. We manage one thousand two hundred and seventy miles of road, of which a hundred and ten are gravel roads that is strictly on our local road system. We have sixty three bridges, over twenty six thousand signs within the county, we have forty nine signalized intersections. In twenty twenty two, we managed a hundred and sixty one projects, that's about ninety miles of various types of road improvements and investment. And we have fifty nine employees at the year and our goal for twenty twenty two, we currently had twelve vacancies. And primarily on our road maintenance operations side with those holding commercial drivers licenses. So a lot of activity and recruiting and retention in that area. And I wanted to just point out that on our website and our about us tab, we actually created a year in review video. So you can actually, if you want, take a look at some of the projects and various investments as well as activities of the road commission in a YouTube video. To enhance today's presentation, so next slide. I always like to highlight the condition of our roads, much like the two presentations that you had before me and talking about. The viewpoint from an actuary or an auditor's perspective, this is the viewpoint of a very good measurement, I think, for. The infrastructure on the county road system here in Kalamazoo, we have some of the finest roads within the state. And there's ways that you can actually compare us to other surrounding areas. But overall, we have a pretty good, healthy system, always investing because the roads continue to deteriorate. So we're constantly investing in our infrastructure and really appreciate the many partners that work with us on the local level, especially for the local road improvements. So we do rate our roads, it's a statewide rating system, we do that across the state of Michigan, including our gravel roads. So this is just a snapshot and you could see that in our annual report page by page and township by township as well, next line. So I just wanted to touch on, we in twenty twenty, according to state legislature, have to come up with a transportation plan. Really talking about the various elements that affect transportation funding, including risk analysis. And as we looked at it in twenty twenty, which that plan is going to be updated this year, we had a gap of about six point seven million dollars annually for the road system. That really is necessary year after year in terms of investment to try to keep our roads in good and fair condition. And bridges, it's about two point one million annually. For some counties across the state, these numbers are a lot larger. But again, our continued investment in our bridge network and our road system, these are big numbers, but it could be a lot worse. And just to give you an idea of what's been happening in terms of project costs, if you look at statewide projects on the freeway system, as we looked at twenty twenty one in comparison to years past. It was about a fifty five percent increase in the cost of projects on the local system. And again, when I say local, I'm meaning everybody else but the state of Michigan, it was about forty percent. And here in Kalamazoo County, we've experienced about thirty percent increases in the cost of doing business and delivery of projects overall, so next slide. So I wanted to touch a little bit about twenty twenty three and where we are today, we have investments of over twenty six million dollars of a hundred and ninety projects that we're managing. And of course, we're all working within that small window of opportunity between like about April, November. So there is a lot of activity in construction and infrastructure investment happening, not only from the road commission, but all of our transportation partners. So we appreciate everybody's patience as they make their way throughout the county. That also, we have a lot of routine maintenance, things that we do, whether it be pothole patching, guardrails, signs, et cetera, those activities continue on. And we receive about fifty six or five thousand six hundred service requests annually, but those also come from our team, not just the public. So those service requests for us also are considered work orders. And so we do have organizational goals and manage system of pending the type of issue and its sense of urgency and priority of our timelines to complete those. So we do appreciate the service requests as the residents and our team and everyone across the county, including visitors. Help us pinpoint where to send our crews for various issues across the county. All right, next slide. So these are some of our largest projects for twenty twenty three, and I'm sorry, it doesn't look like the the pictures are flipping through there. But Parkview Avenue, Eleventh Street, Twelfth Street Roundabout in Oshito Township, that's about two point three million dollars investment. We anticipate that being opening, fingers crossed, August eleventh, we hope to have a little opportunity for the residents who have been very patient. And many people have been very patient with that project. I think I have one in the audience anyways, but we are planning maybe a little event to actually walk the roundabouts. On the tenth with it hopefully opening up on the eleventh, so appreciate everybody's patience on that one. Sprinkle Road, that project is complete, that was about seven hundred and ninety five million dollar investment, and I know one that's near and dear to many of our county partners, which is Lake Street. That's approximately a five point seven million dollar investment, there is a lot of activity there with a lot of vested partners. I don't know how else to say other than thank you for the continued patience for our sheriff's department, county parks, all of the users, residents in that area. Lot of activity in a very small window, but a very big investment and it's overall a good project. And I got to thank all of our contractors and vendors who work on these as well, so. All right, so we talk about a lot about road investment, we have to invest in our assets, which are facilities as well. We do have a new campus, I know we've shared that quite a few times here and I invite anyone who's interested in a tour, we'd love to have you. But we, with the support of this county board, we had a bond of about fifty five million dollars. Total cost is coming in at about sixty five million dollars, that's for the complete complex. Started in twenty twenty two, we anticipate that potentially it may be completed March of twenty twenty four. And our current facility is sold, so we are able to stay in our current location until which time we need to move and or prior to May one. So we continue to work out of the Kilgore Roads facility to ensure that service delivery isn't disrupted, especially during winter operations. So next slide, these are just giving you a captured idea of the viewpoint of the facility, this is pretty much where we are today. The front building there that you see is our administration side, and one of the things that was really important to us as an organization is connectivity. And that connectivity with all of our employees being under one roof, working together in terms of team building, so that's unique. And so all of us are housed in the front building there, it's really administration operations, it's all employees there. And then we have our storage, equipment storage facility, and then the wing there out is our equipment maintenance facility. So basically our mechanics and working on our facility. And then in the far northwest corner is our salt barn. I think we should, you know, maybe put some advertising on its roof or something, it's a beautiful white campus or canvas there. But we can see some of the paving's been around that and then to the east of the salt barn, I don't know if you can really see it there, but that's our scale. So we use that to measure all of our inventory, especially when we're sharing too, there's folks that share our sand salt. And they can can come in and out of there and we can scale that inventory for proper inventory. And that is what we considered phase one, which is that sand salt barn facility building and the scale. And we anticipate actually taking full ownership of that and transitioning over Friday of this week. So what that means to us is potentially we can start putting sand salt material hauling it to that site and being able to pull out of there this winter. So that's the hope that we move into. And then on the other side there to the south is a wash bay as well as storage facility, kind of there in the middle of the two white roofs. And then further to the south is just another storage building, so it's a complete complex. I do believe state of the art, again, proud to have all of our employees under one roof, each having their own. Office, that was one thing that was important, we had a steering committee made up of many members of our team and our road maintenance operators. We don't have a locker room per se, everybody has their own office and just an opportunity to create that ability to everybody have a sense of space. So we're really excited about it, very proud of it, appreciate the investment. I think the next slide, Dina might have just a rendering, that's the rendering hopefully that we get to by March of next year, it is fully enclosed. So we anticipate a lot of activity inside and away from the weather, that is our what we're focused on right now. But that is a rendering, it is closed as the sewer project with Comstock Township is going on right in front of the facility, so there is a detour happening right now. Next slide, so I would be remiss in not saying that we're hiring, so anybody who's listening or anybody who's out there. Who is interested in either apprenticeship program, has the commercial driver's license, the CDL engineering positions, we have a lot of this information on our website. You know, happy to come out to any hiring types of events, which we do to try to recruit. And certainly, more importantly, we also want to retain our current employees who are working very, very hard to give you a sense of that. We're trying to get to fifty nine employees for the size of our county and the size of our work. We are small but mighty in terms of doing a lot of work and that's twenty four hours a day, three hundred and sixty five days a year, emergency calls. So I, on behalf of our board and myself, I just have to say kudos to our team who are working really, really hard. Presently, service requests are a little bit delayed, but we will get to those, just appreciate everybody's patience. And then next slide, just ways to contact us, there's many ways to do so. We're trying to increase some of our followers on some of this social media platforms, but we are putting out information every day. As well as if you're signed up, next slide to RCKC Connect, it's our way of trying to to get with you, I know sometimes those come out at like six o'clock in the morning. But certainly we're able to get those, so you have a sense for your commute as to where we're working and what we're doing potentially in your backyard or your area. So hopefully folks can sign up for RCKC Connect. And finally, I think the next slide is I'm happy to take any questions.
Questions from commissioners, Commissioner Gessler.
Thank you, Chair, Joanna, I remember it was a few months ago, I think it was Travis was making the presentation of progress. And talking about how being able to put all your equipment under a roof is a big benefit. And I've since then learned from many of my rural farmer constituents that that's why they try to get as much of their equipment under a roof. As they possibly can, because it lasts longer, the repairs are more minor, is that pretty much the case for you guys?
Commissioner Gessler, it is indeed, so we absolutely want to have, I mean, these are huge investments, right? All of our equipment are assets as well, we're talking about two hundred and fifty thousand dollars, say, per truck if you and and graders, I mean, we can go on and on. So having those all indoors, especially during the winter months when we're out plowing snow, they're covered in ice just to be able to thaw out. It is definitely going to be a very positive and efficient way of maintaining our equipment under roof.
Will you humor me for one more question?
I would, of course.
Again, and I don't remember the number, but it was what the difference in price was for, I don't know if it's a ton of square or cubic yard or whatever of asphalt. I think it was Travis that mentioned that also, maybe in that same presentation, and it was alarming how it is more expensive now, not that other things aren't going up too, I mean, look at the price of gas, but. Can you comment on that?
So I think as noted in the slide, I mean, we're seeing just on average about a thirty percent increase on all of the all of the items that come into the activities of service. And I think just overall, there's a lot of contributing factors to that, just in terms of, say, a lot of our contractors, labor shortages or the costs going up in terms of wages, those are all contributing. Supply and demand, one of the things on the local level and from a statewide perspective, we're considered locals. Well, a lot of times with the fewer contractors across the state, they're getting very busy with state type projects, the larger projects. And then our projects maybe are, you know, put not as high priority, but if they do want to do that, contractors have the ability to potentially, the the cost could increase as well, right? Because they're already tied up with a lot of their forces on some of the larger jobs. So yes, asphalt has increased, sand salt, I mean, really, a lot of the contributing factors of all the activities that we had, on average, about thirty percent increase.
Thank you. Commissioner Scheps.
Thank you, Chair, thank you, Managing Director, and congratulations to you and the road commission and all the innovative things you're doing and things that are working well. Thank you also for sharing the sort of escalating pressure of costs and how you're looking to efficiencies. Encourage you to continue to collaborate with the county board in ways that we can find additional efficiencies to make infrastructure investments more effective. We'll have ongoing dialogue about that, and I see you again, we saw you yesterday for some dialogue. In that discussion, I elevated around your labor shortage approaches for DE and I, which is a priority of our board here. We had some discussions about the demographics of the employees at the road commission. And you were going to provide that to me because my concern was that it doesn't appear you have any people of color and dominantly male employees. And so you were going to provide some detail for me about what it looks like and what approaches you're taking to reach out, to broaden that diversity in your workforce and recruit more employees.
Yes, so certainly we're an equal opportunity employer and we are willing to invest in any employees regardless of their background. And just in terms of that, I don't have that yet, I have not been in the back to the office since yesterday. But our team is working on providing that, I think the most important thing is for anybody for this board, for anybody who's listening. Is if you're interested in our type of work, certainly shout out, but we are also more than willing to come out to any type of organization to help showcase. I mean, frankly, a lot of times we're starting with high schoolers and even middle schoolers to also try to showcase the benefits of the work that we do in public service. And we are more than willing, you know, to bring those folks on board and to showcase the work that we do in contributing. So I will get that information for you, I do have it on my list, our team is working on it and we will be following up.
Thank you, and then just one more that came from the actuarial report, do you have a sense of why? Particularly in the retirement culture at the road commission, more employees are taking that opt out for the annuity rather than maintaining their defined benefit?
I do not.
I can tell you that it is more common, that wish the actuary was still here, but to let you know that it's more common for men to take lump sum payment than women. We don't live as long, so the payments don't go out as long. Are there any, are there any other questions for commissioners, Commissioner Dillon?
I always appreciate your presentations, thank you, I actually looked at your report before the meeting. And in your, where you list the roadways and the conditions that are under bridges, you have list, it shows two serious or critical bridges in Kalamazoo County, is that like addressed? Are those addressed immediately or how's that being?
So good question, right? Even though those bridges are potentially, the condition data is showing that, that doesn't mean that they're unsafe or you can't drive over them or anything along those lines. We do have two bridges that are closed, but those are on the local system presently, so that's just looking at various types of elements, whether it be the piers or the abutments. I mean, I could go on and on in terms of all the various aspects of a bridge that we look at, but that doesn't mean that they're unsafe and you can't drive over them. But that doesn't mean that they're unsafe and you can't drive over them because certainly we would have those closed, which they are not at present. But what we do is when we look at that, that assists us because in terms of when we have to go, local bridge funding is a total separate funding category than roads. So that's one of those elements that will help us achieve, I hate to say this worst first, but potentially additional funding for our, for our bridges based on how they're categorized in severe and or poor conditions. So it's certainly something that we keep an eye on. Our bridges are inspected and must be inspected every three years on a rotation basis. So we keep up with all of that along with preventative maintenance. So that's obviously something that we're always looking at, but it's an investment as well. So and part of, one other thing I wanted to add about the bridges is typically a bridge, you know, pending on its condition, it could cost up to $3 million just to replace one bridge. I know Commissioner Hepler might have some experience in this area too, but they're very, very expensive. And when there's a call for bridge projects or bridge applications for funding across the state, there's always more need than there is the available funding because that has not increased for over 20 years in terms of the local bridge funding package. So, but the short answer is we're keeping an eye on those.
Thank you very much. I will say just a quick comment. The 30% increase that you're experiencing is probably a testament to you guys really cutting costs. Cause that is, that is lower than the national average by quite significantly. I think you guys are doing a great job by keeping the Paser ratings where they are right now comparable to other counties. But as we look at Act $51 not meeting the inflationary value of these road construction projects and these bridge construction projects. I think as we look down one, two, three years down the road, if the state doesn't take action to start investing in the infrastructure, then the local municipalities are going to have to start doing that. So I'm just putting that on the radar. Commissioner Gessler.
Yes, you just reminded me of an anecdote. It was three weeks ago, I had a chance to go to Rochester Hills, which is over somewhere in the Detroit, Detroit area. And we decided to go not on interstates. Took a little longer, but it gave us a chance to kind of see what other counties are doing. And boy, when we got back after going one day and then coming back the next, you know, I don't want to sing Joanna's praises too much and the rest of her crew, but you know, wow. The roads we were on often were really bad and don't compare very well at all with what we're used to here in Kalamazoo County. Thank you.
Yeah, it's Kalamazoo County and Berry County in West Michigan, and those are the two highest.
Commissioner, if I can, just real quick, I know I'm past my 10 minutes. I just wanted, I forgot to showcase this. Speaking of annual reports, another hat that I wear, I happen to chair the Michigan Transportation Asset Management Council and our annual report is out as well. It came out in May. I think I might've sent it out electronically as well. But this showcases some of the data statewide, so it's not just in Kalamazoo and you can kind of see that. And also provides some of the information where you can find the comparison data in various elements, including funding, safety, all of those areas from a statewide level. So I have some hard copies. If anybody's interested, let me know and I can get those to either Commissioner Gessler, Commissioner Mazer, and I can get those out to you as well. Thank you.
Commissioner Hepler had one more thing, sir.
Thank you. Thanks for bringing up my bridge project that I've been working on for nine years to get a a bridge that was built in 1909, one lane bridge, five ton weight limit. And it's about a million dollars and it's the distance from me to Mr. Gessler. To give you an idea of what the cost might be and something like that, we were just working on it yesterday. And I want to also highlight what John was just saying, Chair Taylor was just saying that we need to be thinking about our, how we're going to fund roads. Gas tax is what funds your roads right now. That's what pays for roads. We're now working towards going to electric. Electric doesn't pay for roads, people. So in the next five to 10 years, we're going to have to refigure on how we're going to fund the infrastructure that we travel on every day to get where we need to go to work, to school, to play. So something I'm throwing out there to keep in the back of your minds that funding for our infrastructure is critical. And I will continue to get on my little soapbox and echo it every chance I get. And I want to thank Joanne and the Road Commission for the fine work and the hard work that they have ahead of them. I'm in the same boat with you folks, trying to figure out how to fund it and how to keep it up and take care of it. So thank you for your partnership with all the local communities because I know we do work together. Because you take care of the county roads, we take care of the village roads and the city's got to take care of their roads and their infrastructure. So and we want to fix the stuff under it before we fix the top of it. So, thank you.
And I'm sure consumers' energy is going to be a part of that solution. Thank you very much for your presentation, Chair. Next, Finance Director post reviewable of accounts payable and payroll dispersals.
Good evening, Chair, Vice Chair, who just stepped out and Vice Chair Pro Tem. And accounts payable claims list totaling $6,989,486.57 is presented for review. Of this total, the Board of Commissioners is asked to approve the claims totaling $5,640,043.64. Payroll dispersals totaling $2,427,121.35 are presented for the July 21st and 31st payrolls. There were no conflicts of interest with this set of claims. Total two checks were reissued due to a vendor not receiving the original check and an EFT returned due to no account or unable to locate that vendor.
Commissioners? No, thank you very much. We are just cruising along now. Next up, business priorities, budget. I don't have anything on there except for I do want to make commissioners aware that I have talked to Administrator Catlin and I'm going to sit down with him and Ryan and, you know, look at the budget process. Due to expedient, or look at budget numbers so that when commissioners get numbers too, if you want, if anybody wants to be part of that meeting or part of that process. But I, you know, as we get close to what's going to be presented and what we have for our final date of November, I think that's pushing it really close to the end of thing. Because employees, employers will have to start preparing all these notices if we don't pass the budget. I'd really like to shoot, get it done by the end of October. Our second meeting in October, that's kind of my goal. That gives, if something crazy happens and we do have to go into the first meeting of November, we can. But if we really push it and try to do it on the first meeting of November to pass the budget, we could run into some really tight deadlines. So I'm just, as long as all commissioners are aware and okay, and if you'd like to participate in the process, please let Kevin or I know. Kevin, Administrator?
Thank you, Chair. I appreciate it. I just wanted to, yeah, just comment on a couple of things. So we'll, we still do plan to have the budget. Ministers recommended budget to the board. The first meeting in September, we will be meeting with the Chair as he stated to kind of mull over some of the revenue, major revenue projections that we'll have that ready. And then I did just want to comment really quick on the, the fund balance that was presented tonight by the auditor. Do recall that that number is as of 12/31/2022 in that the board has been occasionally spending down some of that fund balance. As of today, the board has, through various budget adjustments, has spent down the fund balance of $39 million to, and well, so 39 million some change to, so they spent that down about 411,000. But do recall that we have some priorities and some objectives in the hopper for a parking structure. That's going to be a substantial lot of money. We've sort of earmarked that in a sense to the tune of about 5 million, but that could increase and we don't know yet because we don't have any design work and working with some partners on that. And then also know that the CIP Committee has not shared the recommendation with the board yet, but the, the recommendation is to utilize fund balance to fund that. I, when the Chair asked me earlier, the question about retirees that are taking lump sum payment, my, my brain was not thinking quickly enough. So I actually do know that number. So because the actuary came back and we sort of realized a loss, our contribution does increase for this year because we didn't budget for that loss. That amount is around 650,000. That comes from fund balance. And so these sort of things hit fund balance occasionally. And that's why we have such a large fund balance to protect and to shield us from potentially having to do layoffs or cut services, things like that, when things like this happen. So, and they're, and these are sort of things that we can't predict from time to time. So $650,000, a lot of money, but we do have the fund balance to move that forward. And then I'll be able to share other information on the actuary. But anyway, I just wanted to kind of put that into perspective in terms of fund balance. In terms of budget, normally units of local government, it's not uncommon for them to budget the use of fund balance to budget for the next year. So we can certainly look at doing some of those things that there are certain priorities that the board wants to fund moving forward. But usually those are used for sort of uncommon and one-time expenses. So, but we plan to have something for you. The first meeting in September and hopefully have, have something good to present for you. Thank you.
And that fund balance did not include the CIP dollars, correct?
That is correct. Yeah. So the number that the auditor shared tonight, yeah, it's, it's not redo, yeah, we didn't, it's, yeah, it doesn't encompass that. So right now we're looking at roughly $31 million from all the numbers I just shared from the 39 million that was presented.
So the 31 million in CIP, I'm hoping, and I know we can't, I can't commit to this or promise this until we do that. But I'm hoping a large portion of the public, of the parking structure can be, can be pulled from CIP as opposed to unrestricted unfunded balance. But we'll, we'll see where we're at. I do anticipate, based on the projections that Ryan has given in previous months, I do anticipate about a three to $5 million carryover, mostly due to the increase in investments incomes. We'll see what the mark to market report comes out with that, but I do increase, anticipate that. And then as Administrator Catlin mentioned, the CIP Committee did meet and we recommended spending close to, it's about 2.9, 2.9 million of, that we're going to make that recommendation to the full Board of Commissioners of using that 2.9 out of unrestricted, unallocated fund balance. And then looking at a longer term CIP process, whether it be increased in investment reports over, over whatever it is or whatever our carryover balance is from the previous year, a percentage of that, or whatever our investments are. Or, you know, if we really wanted to get dive down in the budget, funding the CIP is a line item. Traditionally, what this county has done is it's relied on carryover to fund that. So hopefully we can get a better long-term strategy with CIP, but Terrell did a great job working on that. And I think we're going to come to a solution by next, the next budget cycle. So we're kind of tackling this as a multi-year process, not just one year. So thank you very much, Kevin, or Administrator Catlin. Any other commissioners questions? Okay. Now, any other items? Request for approval of Be Well Beautiful Woman proclamation. Commissioner Morales.
Chair, I actually have Mr. Maro West. She is going to read this for us. Welcome.
Welcome. Thank you so much, County Commissioner Morales and the entire commissioning body. I appreciate you having me. So the Kalamazoo County Board of Commissioners proclamation honoring Be Well Beautiful Woman, whereas Be Well Beautiful Woman is a distinguished global wellness enterprise dedicated to providing women with comprehensive support in both their personal and professional lives. Whereas Be Well Beautiful Woman stands as an empowering platform that offers a wide range of services, including business planning, executive coaching, training and retreats, all thoughtfully designed to uplift and equip women with the necessary tools for success while emphasizing the importance of self-care. Whereas we proudly acknowledge that Be Well Beautiful Woman was founded by myself, Demara West, a highly accomplished Kalamazoo native, whose extensive expertise as a licensed therapist, a professional certified coach, a yoga teacher, a Reiki master and practitioner of various wellness modalities such as breathwork, tapping, forest bathing, and so many other things are the program's offers, offerings and resonates with women from diverse backgrounds from all walks of life. Whereas Be Well Beautiful Woman has made an indelible impact, touching the lives of over 3,000 women through its transformative service, services with an impressive 90% of them hailing from Kalamazoo and an incredible 96% representing women of color, of which 85% are black women and are based right here in this county. Whereas Be Well Beautiful Woman has demonstrated its commitment to inclusivity and accessibility by receiving full and partial scholarship applicants, fostering connections with more than 50 organizations within Kalamazoo County and excellent, and extending scholarships to deserving women, in addition to providing invaluable no-cost services through the unwavering support of the Stryker Johnston Foundation and the Synergy Health Center. Now therefore be it proclaimed in heartfelt recognition of Be Well Beautiful Woman's exceptional contributions to empowering women and fostering holistic growth, the Kalamazoo County Board of Commissioners hereby declares Be Well Beautiful Woman as an illuminating beacon of hope, inspiration and unwavering support for women pursuing professional and personal fulfillment and proclaim that is proclamation serves as a testament of deep appreciation for the immeasurable positive impact Be Well Beautiful Woman has made in the lives of countless women residing right here in Kalamazoo County and beyond and encourages, and encourages continued collaboration and support to ensure the perpetuation of this extraordinary enterprise. Thank you, commissioning body.
Thank you very much. Commissioner Morales, do you have anything to add or? No? Okay. Questions from commissioners will probably, we're putting this on, I don't believe it's on the seven o'clock, it'll be in two weeks on the agenda, correct? Kevin, or two weeks? Yeah. Okay. So that'll be on our agenda at seven o'clock at, in the next commissioner's meeting. Next. Is it tonight? Okay, it is tonight. I think we need, where's corporate counsel? Do we need a motion to put that on the seven o'clock tonight since it was read first? No? Or is it good or?
Counsel, under general practices of the board's bylaws, the typically it would just move to the next regular meeting. However, if you'd wished for it to be heard tonight, there's nothing that prohibits that. You can do it by unanimous consent in this committee of the whole meeting or you can do it by motion, either appropriate.
Well, if, would you be prepared to make a motion at the seven o'clock or tonight, or does it does not matter? You good with that? Okay. We'll do it at the next, at the seven o'clock at the next meeting. Next is, Commissioner Shups.
Thank you so much, Chair. So just, we're about to move to the next agenda item, best other. So one other item is just some discussion about additional allocation to the United Way for gun violence prevention. So this board has already committed $500,000 to the United Way for the initial response. A portion of that money has not yet been allocated or expended. And there are sub recipients out of funds that have gone to the United Way and asked for a release of additional monies to them. So it's already with one, within what the board has committed to allocate to the United Way. So we'd like to add that to the agenda to the seven o'clock meeting for this evening. We could do that. As counsel was just explaining here by unanimous consent, or we can enter a motion at seven.
I'm willing to put it on unfinished business or new business with unanimous consent. Otherwise it would just be, somebody would take a motion under. So what's your preference? Commissioner Gessler.
Thank you, Chair. Could you refresh my mind on, I somehow thought we allocated or set aside a million dollars? And are we giving that out in two increments or, you know, how's that work?
Kevin is going to be able to describe this much better than me because he told me earlier this afternoon and I retained about 45% of it. So Administrator Catlin.
Thank you, Chair. So Commissioner Gessler, this is a process that the board approved, I believe it was last. The agreement was approved sometime in last September. What the board did was allocated a portion of that million dollars. So that bucket, 500,000 of it went to the United Way to administer a grant program to sort of impact a more, or make a more immediate impact on gun violence in the community. When they did that, the city also committed a portion of their million dollar commitments, like half million dollars. So to the United Way to administer this grant program. What they did was with our portion, some of the agencies dropped out. So only a portion of the $500,000, so three So only a portion of the five hundred thousand dollars, so three hundred and fifty thousand dollars was awarded to Urban Alliance. So there was a balance of funding kind of left over from that five hundred thousand dollars that went unspent. There are secondary sub recipients, is what we call them in the the agreement or the contract between us and the United Way, where they actually performed some of the services that are requested in the resolution funeral expenses, funeral expense assistance. And in particular, those agencies or agency were proposing that the balance left over of that of a portion of the balance left over of the half million dollars go to one of those secondary sub recipients that was actually funded out of the city portion of the five hundred thousand. I know it's very convoluted. Nonetheless, we have funding left over from our funding allocated United Way that we would like to sort of grant to a secondary sub recipient to administer some funeral assistance programs to the city or to the county or or those affected and impacted by gun violence. Does that help clarify? So no, no, not at all. So what happened is is that so so that phase one, what we call that that granting program that they administered, it was a closed process. There were only certain agencies that were allowed in that process. So that so the Urban Alliance didn't request half million dollars. They only needed three hundred and fifty thousand dollars for their two-year program. There's this a balance that's left over that can be reallocated for a specific purpose. United Way did their job in full. It's just that there's funding left over for a different agency to take advantage of, to offer more assistance to the community.
Thank you.
Any other questions from commissioners? Commissioner Mazur?
I don't know. Did you put the question out? I'm not real comfortable moving this to tonight. Since we just got it today, I'd like to have a chance, maybe some public feedback, you know, before I I just don't feel I know enough.
Well, we can, in that instance, then Commissioner Straps, would you be willing to make a motion at the seven o'clock? And then we can, we can do it that way. Okay, understand. My, I'm going to be supporting this. I do wonder why, you know, prevention, and this is for burials and not prevention, but that's a whole different story. It's still impacting the victims. So I, you know, but I just think we should take the prevention out of it, but that's getting into semantics and we got a closed session. So we will move it as a motion at the seven o'clock. Next, we have a closed session, and I think we do have one on the property, correct? Who's got the motion? Commissioner Heffler?
I think this is correct. It's in here. I move that the board go into closed session as permitted by the Open Meetings Act, MCL fifteen point two six eight, parentheses, one D, to consider the purchase or leasing of real property.
Motion, is there support? Motion and support. Clerk Cox, we please take roll.
Commissioner DeLu.
Yes.
Commissioner Gessler.
Yes.
Vice Chair Pro Tem Heffler. Commissioner Mazur.
Yes.
Commissioner Morales. Vice Chair Ray. Commissioner Straps.
Yes.
Chair Taylor.
Yes.
Commissioner Wheeler.
Yes.
Nine yes.
You are in closed session.
The chair will entertain a motion to come out of closed session. And motion moved and support. All those in favor signify by saying aye. Those opposed, we're out of closed session. The chair will entertain a motion to approve the minutes of closed session. It's been moved by Commissioner Morales, supported by Commissioner Hepler. All those in favor signify by saying aye. Those opposed, when minutes passed, we are adjourned.
All right, I'm gonna call the Kalamazoo County Commissioners August 2nd, 2023 Regular Board Meeting to Order. First on the agenda is the invocation reflection given by Commissioner Strebs.
Thank you Chair, I have my guest joining us this evening, so I'd like to welcome, pardon me, Rabbi Shaker to join us today. Rabbi Shaker, if you can come to the podium. Rabbi Shaker, she/her is a spiritual leader of the Temple of Manay, Israel. This is the Jewish Reform Congregation of Kalamazoo. Rabbi is an active leader and Isaac, co-chair of the Faith Alliance, which is a program of Outfront Kalamazoo. And she's the first Vice President of the Board of Friendship Village here in Kalamazoo County as well. Rabbi Shaker, thank you so much for joining us today and sharing the invocation with the board.
Thank you so much for having me. We gather this evening in this sacred space where the business of Kalamazoo County is accomplished. Where the people of Kalamazoo County are heard and where our elected officials hold space. We pray that our elected leaders are guided by morals and values that place the well-being of our community front and center. The Jewish people read this week from Deuteronomy that God demands only this from us. To revere God, to walk in God's way, and to love and serve God with our entire heart and soul. We do so by following God's laws, which includes remembering that all people are made in God's image. And that all people are loved by God. If we follow God's law, then we treat all people as we wish to be treated. This is a lesson for all people. Here in Kalamazoo County, we still have much to learn in regards to how we treat our neighbors. Too often, we let what we see as difference divide us, instead of remembering that we all have more in common than first appearances might suggest. We must work each and every day to push past first impressions of people and of places in order to make Kalamazoo County the best it can be. As this commission goes about its work tonight and every day, may the commission remember that we are all here to serve this diverse community. May each member of this commission be blessed in their work, in their coming and in their going today and every day. Amen.
Alright, Clerk Cox, will you please take role?
Commissioner DeLu.
Here.
Commissioner Gisler.
Here.
Vice Chair Protem Hepler.
Here.
Commissioner Mazur.
Here.
Commissioner Morales. Vice Chair Ray.
Present.
Commissioner Strebs.
Here.
Chair Taylor.
Here.
Commissioner Wheeler.
Here.
Nine present.
Next up is the proclamations. Not on this, but it's on my packet. Commissioner Wheeler, will you take us through this? Or? Commissioner Morales, will you? This is the Mothers of Hope Recovery is Possible.
Yes. Commissioner Strebs is gonna read.
Okay.
Yes. Alright, thank you Chair Taylor, so, and Commissioners, I'd like to read into the record tonight a Kalamazoo County Board of Commissioners proclamation honoring Mothers of Hope Recovery is Possible Day. Whereas Gwen Lanier and Dolores Johnson were both mothers who suffered from addiction to drugs and alcohol, who lost everything, including their ability to effectively care for their children. But with a great deal of help from people like Dr. Michael Leitman and Reverend Dr. Ortha Giliard, the places like the Safe House, they both began the difficult road to recovery. Whereas they learned they could lead on and rely on God after care recovery meetings and program and one another to face each day without drugs. Whereas nationwide, drug-related deaths in the last thirteen years rose from 21,000 to over 47,000 and remained steady as there have been a significant increase with over 80,000 reported overdose deaths. It's with these statistics that mothers, in that Mothers of Hope's vision to restore communities impacted by trauma, systemic inequities, and substance use disorders. Whereas the Kalamazoo County Board of Commissioners wishes to honor and celebrate Mothers of Hope's 25th anniversary with the greater community, to highlight this day while honor and pay tribute all, to offer their contributions to our community. Whereas the Kalamazoo County Board of Commissioners recognizes the significant contributions of Mothers of Hope and numerous grassroots leaders and outreach groups to help increase cultural awareness, education, enrichment, and community engagement with county residents. Is through their support and community involvement, the Kalamazoo County has continued to become more culturally diverse and a welcoming county for everyone. And whereas the Kalamazoo County Board of Commissioners is committed to recognizing Mothers of Hope as an important part of the Kalamazoo County and it is, and its strong inclusive community. Now therefore be it recognized annually, on the 5th of August, Mothers of Hope Recovery is Possible Day. Now therefore be it proclaimed. Kalamazoo County Board of Commissioners does hereby proclaim August 5th as Mothers of Hope Recovery is Possible Day and call its observance to all county residents. I move that adoption of that proclamation.
There is a motion and support, any discussion? Clerk Cox, will you please take role?
Commissioner DeLu.
Yes.
Commissioner Gisler.
Yes.
Vice Chair Protem Hepler.
Yes.
Commissioner Mazur.
Yes.
Commissioner Morales.
Yes.
Vice Chair Ray.
Yes.
Commissioner Strebs.
Yes.
Chair Taylor.
Yes.
Commissioner Wheeler.
Yes.
Nine yes.
Congratulations. If you. If you would like to say a few words, I don't wanna pressure you, but if you.
I will tell you that a long time ago, there was a cracked epidemic in Kalamazoo and, and practically the whole country. And it was devastating to our community and there was a Reverend Dr. Ortha Giliard that pastored here, and that epidemic broke his heart. And Pastor Giliard decided to do something about it, so he went out on the streets alone at night and talked to people who were suffering from this addiction. He also established the Safe House. It was a ministry of the church and he placed a minister over it that also had suffered from substance abuse addiction, and I think that that was one of the reasons why it was so powerful. Gwen and Dee were the beneficiaries of that effort. Gwen and Dee began a road that included people like Dr. Michael Leitman, who continued to assist them and when Safe House discontinued their, the ministry. Gwen and Dee wanted, they had gone through and been on the road for recovery for some time, and so finally, they realized that the hope that they had, they could give to others. And at that time, they did, they started Mothers of Hope 25 years ago. They've been clean for 35 years and for 32 years. They have, they have, they, so today, when you recognize Mothers of Hope and this wonderful proclamation for Gwen and Dee, you, you also recognizing all the years of work that they did, recovery that they did, resilience, and all the people that emanated from this organization who are out there doing the same work. We thank you for this recognition, we thank you. I, I'm sorry that Gwen and Dee aren't here, Gwen has some mobility issues, so she may not have been able to come. I, I know that they intended to, but we really want you to know how much we appreciate that, this recognition. Today, we also have crises, and if you ask Gwen and Dee, what is at the core of that crisis is people who struggle with mental health self-medicate, and they use drugs to do that. And if you ask any lawyer, how many of their clients are suffering from mental health? If you ask teachers and social workers and people all over the community that are providing service, they too would agree that mental health is a crisis in our community as it is all over the country. So, we thank you for the recognition, we thank you for, and we want to invite you to participate on Saturday in our Walk for Recovery, and if you can't participate, you can donate. And if you can, you can do both. Again, thank you for the honor.
Okay, Commissioner Wheeler, will you take us through the communications? And then I'll have the consent agenda be read by the Commissioner Strebs, because they did the invocation.
Communications, Antonagon Resolution opposing changes to the septic provisions of Michigan, excuse me, of the Michigan Public Health Code. I think that's the only one.
Notice from Cooper Township Zoning Board of Appeals.
Let me see, let me scroll up and see.
Am I on the wrong?
Nope, that's the only one that I have.
My civic clerk has a letter from the Western Michigan University informing the county that it provides opportunities for students to further develop their interest in experience of public and nonprofit administration, has that been? It's on my civic clerk under agendas.
Yeah, I only have a letter B, so I'm assuming there was a letter A.
You're, you're absolutely correct, I was on the, yep, sorry about that. Okay. Okay. Next, we have approval of minutes, the chair will entertain a motion to approve the July 18, 2023 Draft Committee of the Whole and Regular Meeting Minutes. Moved by Commissioner Morales, support by Commissioner Wheeler, all those in favor signify by saying aye. Motion passes, the chair will entertain a motion to approve the minutes of the July 25, 2023 Draft Budget Retreat. Moved by Commissioner Wheeler, supported by Commissioner Morales, all those in favor signify by saying aye. Motion passes, next, the chair will entertain a motion to approve the agenda. Commissioner Strebs.
Chair, I'd like to enter a motion to amend the agenda. So I'd like to enter, to add an item to non-consent agenda, board adopt a resolution. Trying to see. Pardon me, I move the board adopt a resolution to direct the United Way to allocate 30,000 remaining funds from Phase 1 United Way Grant Award to vet its secondary sub-recipient funeral, burial, and cremation expenses incurred by victims of gun violence and/or their immediate families as presented to the board in draft form. So I move that be added to the non-consent.
Supportive, motion moved and supported by Commissioner, Commissioner Vice, or Vice Chair Ray.
Thank you Chair, I have another item that I'd like to add to not consent, um, is negotiation on 4th and North Church Street.
Okay, is there sport? Sport, okay, that chair as, will entertain a motion to approve the agenda as amended. So moved, alright, all those in favor signify by saying aye.
Hi.
Those opposed? Okay, motion carries. Next, we have a public comment, this is an opportunity for citizens to address the Board of Commissioners. Please give us your name, address, and you have up to three minutes, thank you.
Hi, again Scott Nolton, Grand Haven, Michigan, I'm with Abbey 42, just the high points this time. We were awarded a $936,000 housing millage grant in March of '22. There was no specific or general affordability requirements as a condition to receiving that grant. We've been working a long time on a grant agreement, more than a year. In September of '22, Director Balcom first stated that she wanted some sort of affordability requirement tied to the grant. I was surprised. In September, later September, she said specifically in an email that she would like to see 10% of the units be affordable to 80 to 120% of AMI for a period of 10 years. I worked with her for a year on a grant agreement, we didn't get any place. In May of '23, she completely switched her position and wanted us to engage in very onerous and exhaustive HUD Section 8 income verification of our residents, and we're a market rate housing community, it's apples and oranges. I told her we couldn't do that. We never held ourselves out as being providers of subsidized housing. At this point, we're an absolute impasse. I've been told that the grant will not be given to us, and I guess I'm just asking for some advice as to how we might move this thing forward.
I will say traditionally, we don't go back and forth with people, but if I'll give you my name and contact, and then after the meeting, if you'd like to reach out to me, but we don't usually go back in the back and forth during citizens' time, if that makes sense.
Absolutely fair, and I will, I'll dig you up and I'll, I'll reach out to you. Thanks so much. Thank you for your time.
Thank you.
Good evening, Elizabeth Rusho with the Kalamazoo Conservation District, and I just wanted to give you an update about what the district's been up to. We have had a terrific response to our scrap tire events this year. So far, we've collected over 2,370 scrap tires for recycling, and we still have one more event to go next week. We are having an understanding carbon credits and carbon markets program geared towards agriculture landowners coming in September. We have also just been awarded an MDNR grant to do some habitat improvement on 60 acres for wildlife in the Gornick State Game Area. And I would like to follow up with our next generation of agriculture tour invitation that you should have received that is coming up on August 18, and you're all invited, and we encourage you to please RSVP, and we hope to see you. RSVP is by August 4, and we hope to see you on August 18. And I've got a couple more invitations I'll just pass out, and we hope to see you then. Thank you.
Thank you. And that's in Vicksburg, correct?
Yeah.
Yes, okay, thank you. Any more citizens wishing to address the board?
Good evening. I'm Dave Rack. What's the Director of Kalamazoo County Parks and Expo Center? And I just want to remind everyone that the Kalamazoo County Fair starts next week. So starting Tuesday through Friday, we'll have the 4H shows and exhibits on the grounds, and Saturday is the Community Festival. You should have all received an invitation to the community luncheon that will be on Friday afternoon. So we have Barrett's Barbecues. We hope to see you there. And then on Saturday, a big community festival, so we hope to see everybody out there. We have the Taylor Swift Experience this year on Saturday night, and I know especially some of the 4H kids are very excited about that. We're looking forward to a fun event. So I just wanted to share that and a reminder. Thank you.
Thank you. Only because it's you, John, and I know it's going to be entertaining.
Thank you. And I guess this dates me, but could you describe what the Taylor Swift experience is? I understand there's 50 some of these around the country. Is this like Las Vegas and Elvis impersonators or something?
It could be life altering. But, but it's essentially a cover band of Taylor Swift. So it's a performer. She's a high school student, and she does, she's a very good musician, has a full band. So it should be a lot of fun, something local here for people to do.
Yeah, you can go to a Taylor Swift concert and not have to spend, you know, $500 for a ticket. That's a good idea. Okay, any other citizens wishing to address the board?
Good evening, Commissioner Gisler. My name is John Spencer. I'm with State Representative Matt Hall's office. I am the new district manager. I've had the pleasure of meeting a couple of people in this room tonight, and I'd be more than pleased to make the acquaintance of anyone else who feels so inclined later this evening. A little bit about what I do is, I do a lot of doors. So within the county, within the parts of the district that lie here in Kalamazoo County, I'm knocking on doors, I'm touching base with constituents, I'm seeing if there's anything that we can do to better represent them, or, you know, God forbid that they have any problems at the state level that they need to get in contact with our office. I'm just kind of like the most direct way to get into the office for them. And of course, I can also serve as a resource for anybody who sits on any boards. If there's ever any state legislation you'd like to know a little bit more about or be heard about, then I'm a pretty good person to get a hold of. I do have a business card as of last week. I'm pretty excited about that. I guess I should give my address to 5695 Woodbrook Street School Craft, Michigan. 5695 Woodbrook Street. Oh, a little piece of trivia, for those of you folks that work here in the county building, you might know Monica Spencer. That's my stepmother. All right, well, thank you for your time. I'm happy to be here, and I'll be around. Maybe.
He just, he just got him.
It's a collector's item right now, so.
I wouldn't be shocked. Well, I'll give you some just quick advice. Just stay away from that guy. You'll be, you'll be served well, so. Okay, are there any other citizens wishing to address the board?
I'm a little late to the party, but I'm one of the outreach coordinators for Mothers of Hope. I heard you guys voted on it before I came here, but I guess I'll just remind you guys about our recovery walk this Saturday, August 5, from 10:00, 10:00 a.m. to noon. Yeah, this is our fourth annual recovery walk, so we invite everybody here, and I appreciate everybody for voting on Mother's Day, Mothers of Hope Day.
Thank you very much. Any other citizens wishing to address the board? Administrator Catlin, is there anybody online? Yes, so I know we have four recorded calls to share, and then we will advise on any hands that are raised after that.
Hi, my name is John Verhens, and I am a resident at 6838 Isabel Street, Portage, Michigan. I am a member of District Four with Elville Gil Wheeler as my commissioner. I would like my comments read at both the 4 o'clock and the 7 o'clock meeting. I am calling in opposition to the YWCA Reproductive Health Fund. As a Catholic, I strongly stand against this as we are all created in God's image, and God has plans for us, and it's not God's will for what He has done to be overturned. Also, I understand that the commissioners are looking to improve DE and I within the county, but the way I see it, there already is a lot of issues with DE and I that need to be addressed, especially in the North Side as far as funding to improve the lives of our residents, and especially our youth. The numbers of our youth that are underserved within Kalamazoo County remain high, and why couldn't this $100,000 go towards that? Finally, with insurance covering this procedure as far as transgender going through the change, insurance doesn't cover this. Why should we use our tax dollars to cover this? Insurance doesn't cover it for a reason. Just because someone wants something doesn't mean they should be able to have this exchange, especially when it's been proven that it doesn't always go successful with complications after the surgery. Yes, that can be like any other surgery, but then there's also mental anguish where suicide rates of people that go through exchanges is high. So that is why I'm in opposition, and I even plan on going door to door within my community, speaking out against this if it was to pass to where that would be something at the forefront of the next election. Thank you.
This is Florence Nelson calling. I live in and pay taxes in Kalamazoo County, and I'm calling to voice my strong objection to the Kalamazoo Board of, County Board of Commissioners considering giving $100,000 to the YWCA Reproductive Health Fund. Reproductive Health Fund is a euphemism, as we all know. A useful way, a kind way to say we are going to provide money for abortions. And abortions just kill the baby. That's it. It's not doing anything for reproductive health. And as far as funding transgender procedures, that also is up in the air now, and it would be a huge mistake to provide money for that because there are so many things that are uncertain about that. So I request that you consider not donating that $100,000 to the YWCA. I refuse to have my taxpayer money go for those two procedures. Thank you for listening.
Hello, my name is Joyce Beatty, and I am a resident of Kalamazoo County, and I would like my comments played at both the 4:00 p.m. and the 7:00 p.m. meeting of the County Board on August 2. My concern is that I do not want tax funded funds to go to Planned Parenthoods or the YWCA Reproductive Health Fund to pay for the killing of the unborn and for gender-affirming care. As I look at the statistics on Michigan abortion statistics, Michigan.gov, per 1,000 births in 2022, ages 15 to 44, 45.8% of the rate per thousand women of Black residents had abortions, 45% of women aged between 15 and 44, while only 6.7% of the white folks had abortions per 1,000 women between ages 15 and 44. I think that is totally against Black Lives Matter, and I'm speaking out for my Black brothers and sisters, and I'm praying and hoping that the board does not support more killing of the unborn. Thank you for hearing my call, and I ask you to consider and to defeat any plan to fund YWCA Reproductive Health Fund for the killing of the unborn human beings like all of us. Thank you. Bye.
I'm Jeanette Rubinsky calling from Kalamazoo County. Please play this message, message at both the 4:00 p.m. and 7:00 p.m. meetings of the Kalamazoo County Board of Commissioners on Wednesday, August 2. The YWCA has asked you to give them $100,000 during the 2024 budget process for their reproductive health fund so that they can increase access to abortion, artificial contraception, gender-affirming care, and doula care. I strongly oppose such funding. According to Dr. Stephen Christie, who is a medical doctor, lawyer, and author, 95% of all abortions are performed on healthy women carrying healthy babies. As he points out, giving a healthy unborn child a lethal injection is not healthcare. Dismembering a healthy unborn baby and suctioning it out of the mother is not healthcare. Just because abortion is legal doesn't make it right. Slavery was once legal too. It was abolished because it is morally wrong. Abortion is also morally wrong. I'm not passing judgment on the women who have abortions. I'm passing judgment on the act of abortion itself. Likewise, your task force on gun violence is not condemning the people who use the guns. It is condemning the act of violence itself. Both forms of killing must be stopped. This isn't a case of simply renewing a grant. The original grant of $43,900, which was awarded in April 2021 and dispersed as one payment in December 2021 and two payments in February 2022, should never have happened. That money was originally earmarked for Southwest Michigan first. The Board of Commissioners at the time rescinded it from them and reallocated it to the YWCA Reproductive Health Fund. The measure passed by a single vote. To win the deciding vote, proponents convinced one of the pro-life commissioners that a contract could be drafted stipulating that county money would not be used for abortion. Although well-intentioned, that contract ended up being purely cosmetic. Using county money to pay for non-abortion items freed up money from YWCA's other two funding sources, which could then be used for more abortions. Now the YWCA wants more than twice as much taxpayer money in 2024 for reproductive health fund. Please don't give it to them. Thank you.
Ms. Commissioner Catlin, you might advise me if any hands are raised. Sorry, it took me a long time to say that. There are no hands raised at this time, Chair. Thank you. All right, I'm going to do the transfers and dispersments outside of consent agenda, I think, from here on out. Corporate counsel, does that make sense? Yeah, because it's under, it's above consent agenda items in our packet, so.
Chair Taylor, I'll review the board bylaws. We do have a set agenda order in the bylaws that we have to follow, but if it's, if it's.
Yeah, it's separate. We've just been doing it the different way. I think I'm going to start doing it the way that.
Her bylaws?
Yeah, her bylaws. Well, the chair will entertain a motion to approve the transfers and dispersments. Moved by Commissioner Morales, supported by Vice Chair Pro Tem Hepler. I think we need a roll call vote on this one, though. Clerk Cox, will you take role?
Commissioner Gisler.
Yes.
Vice Chair Pro Tem Hepler.
Yes.
Commissioner Mazur.
Yes.
Commissioner Morales.
Yes.
Vice Chair Ray. Commissioner Strebs.
Yes.
Chair Taylor.
Yes.
Commissioner Wheeler.
Yes.
Commissioner DeLu.
Yes.
Nine yes.
All right, Commissioner Strebs, will you take us through the consent agenda items?
Yes, thank you, Chair. Under our consent agenda, Board of Commissioners, item 20236417, request for review and approval of AY22 WIOA SWA funding to support CBPD for PY23. Item 20236418, request for approval, review and approval of AY22 WIOA statewide activities funding allocations for program year 2023, Customer Relationship Management, Michigan Works. 20236419, request for the review and approval of AY2022 WIOA statewide activities funding for PY2023, high concentrations of WIOA eligible youth. Item 20236420, request for review and approval of AY23 Wagner-Picer Employment Service allocations in AY2023 WIOA statewide activities allocations to support PY2023 ES operations. Number 20236421, request for the review and approval of AY23 Workforce Innovation and Opportunity Act, adult dislocated worker. Workforce Innovation and Opportunity Act Adult Dislocated Worker and Youth Program allocations for the time period of July first twenty-three through July thirtieth of twenty-five. Twenty twenty-three sixty-four twenty-two, request for a review and approval of A Y twenty-two W I O A statewide activities funding for career exploration and experience events. Twenty twenty-three sixty-four twenty-six, request for the review and approval of F Y twenty-two and twenty-three General Fund, General Purpose Funding for Michigan Electric Vehicles Jobs Academy. Item twenty twenty-three sixty-four seventy-two, request for approval of ARPA Advanced Payment Request from Okesha Township in the amount of one hundred and eighty thousand dollars. Twenty twenty-three sixty-four seventy-nine, request for approval of an ARPA Advanced Payment Request from Playground L three C in the amount of seventeen thousand six hundred and sixty-one dollars. Twenty twenty-three sixty-four seventy-seven, resolution to authorize Corporation Counsel and County Administrator Controller to negotiate a purchase agreement between the County of Kalamazoo buyer and David Jones seller and for seller to sell and buyer to buy real property located at two forty-six West Kalamazoo Avenue, Kalamazoo, Michigan, subject to final approval, the purchase agreement by the majority vote of the full Board of Commissioners. Item twenty twenty-three sixty-five sixteen, request to authorize the County Administrator Controller to execute a contract amendment number five with C S M Group necessary to proceed the Kalamazoo Avenue Justice Center building project. Under Circuit Court twenty twenty-three sixty-four seventy-six, requesting board approval for budget adjustment for administrator approval of the Keys Program Grant. Finance twenty twenty-three sixty-four sixty-seven, request for approval of various budget adjustments and transfers. Health and Community Services twenty twenty-three sixty-five fifty-five, request for approval of position eliminations and creations in the maternal and child health division. Twenty twenty-three sixty-four seventy-four, request for approval of a budget transfer from the Area Agency on Aging three A Senior Millage Fund Balance to triple A three A Senior Millage Budget. Housing twenty twenty-three sixty-four twenty-five, request for approval and signature the grant agreement with Young Men's Christian, Young Women's Christian Association Kalamazoo, Michigan, doing businesses as the Y W C A of Kalamazoo from the Housing Millage Supportive Services category for one hundred and ten thousand five hundred and fifteen dollars. Information Technology, item twenty twenty-three sixty-four sixty-two, request for approval of the purchase with Hendrick Associates. The move that the items be voted on at one time by roll call and be considered a consent agenda by the board.
Motion moved and supported. Clerk Cox, will you please take role?
Vice Chair Pro Tem Hepler.
Yes.
Commissioner Mazur.
Yes.
Commissioner Morales.
Yes.
Vice Chair Ray. Commissioner Strebs.
Yes.
Chair Taylor.
Yes.
Commissioner Wheeler.
Yes.
Commissioner DeLu.
Yes.
Commissioner Gissler.
Yes.
Nine yes.
Okay, that takes us into unfinished business and general orders. The chair knows of no unfinished business and general orders. Then we got new business. Commissioner Strebs, will you read the? We got two items under new business. Will you read the first item, please?
The first is a resolution added to the agenda. You want me to read the resolution in the entirety, Chair?
No, well, I'm looking at corporate counsel. Does she need to read the entire resolution?
Okay.
No.
No.
Thank you. I've done enough reading this evening.
She did such an excellent job on the previous stuff.
She almost did as well as Vice Chair Ray did last meeting.
I mean, maybe a close second, maybe. So I'd like to enter a motion, the board adopt a resolution to direct the United Way to allocate thirty thousand dollars of remaining funds from Phase One United Way Grant Award to vetted secondary subrecipient for funeral, burial and cremation expenses incurred by victims of gun violence and/or their immediate families as presented to the board in draft form.
There is a motion and support. Now we are in discussion, discussion from commissioners. Seeing Commissioner Mazur.
Yeah, and I mentioned this earlier, this is the one that we had discussed. Okay, yeah, I'm going to vote against that because I don't like the timing that we just received it in an email this afternoon. It wasn't part of our board packet and so we haven't had any chance for public comment. So, so I'll be voting no.
Thank you. Any other commissioners? A corporate counsel.
Thank you, Chair. Commissioner Mazur, I just wanted to add a brief note that the change in the requested through the resolution is all coming out of the subrecipient grant agreement, which controls the funds. And so this is, it wouldn't be something that this particular set of funds would be subject to public comment or review. It's contractual between the United Way and the county already. And this aligns with that contract. And the United Way could make that subrecipient grant to the secondary source that the board is being asked to look at on their own without board action. The board action is just to make sure that funeral costs are addressed, but I do respectfully understand the timeframe and the need to review and carefully consider. I just wanted to make sure it was known that it's contractual.
Thank you. See no other questions. I, I just had a little bit of a problem calling the burial and cremation preventative, but it's still going to help victims of gun violence. So I'm not gonna let something as miniscule as semantics get in the way. Commissioner Strebs.
Thank you, Chair, and I appreciate that comment. So I just thought I would share a conversation I had last night in National Night Out, opportunity to talk with some of the officers from Kalamazoo Public Safety and in the ongoing discussions we're having around gun violence. That very often suspects become victims, victims and their families then become suspects. So when families are impacted by gun violence, if I, for example, had a sibling killed in gun violence, the likelihood that then I become involved in a violent event goes up astronomically. And so this is a way, you know, maybe is really preventative to give support to families to make sure that they get some care and attention to deal in the aftermath and so that they're not drug into violence and the additional impacts it can have with their families.
Appreciate that perspective. Clerk Cox, will you please take role?
Commissioner Mazur.
No.
Commissioner Morales.
Yes.
Vice Chair Ray.
I'm gonna abstain.
Commissioner Strebs.
Yes.
Chair Taylor.
Yes.
Commissioner Wheeler.
Yes.
Commissioner DeLu.
Yes.
Commissioner Gissler.
Reluctantly, yes.
Vice Chair Pro Tem Hepler.
Yes.
Okay, so seven yes, one no, one abstention.
Okay, Vice Chair Ray, will you read the next item of new business?
Will do. Okay. I move to authorize the Administrator Controller and Board Leadership to enter into negotiations to purchase real property located at four forty North Church Street, Kalamazoo, Michigan, subject to final approval of the negotiated purchase agreement by the Board of Commissioners.
Motion and support discussion. Clerk Cox, will you please take role?
Commissioner Morales. Vice Chair Ray. Commissioner Strebs.
Yes.
Chair Taylor.
Yes.
Commissioner Wheeler.
Yes.
Commissioner DeLu.
Yes.
Commissioner Gissler.
Yes.
Vice Chair Pro Tem Hepler. Commissioner Mazur.
Yes.
Nine yes.
Right, thank you. Next, we have public comment. This is an opportunity for citizens to address the Board of Commissioners. Please give us your name and address and you have up to three minutes. Seeing none, Administrator Catlin, would you advise us in any pre-recorded calls or hands raised?
There are no pre-recorded calls and it does not appear any hands are raised. Thank you.
Thank you. Next is reports of officers' bodies Administrator Controller. I'll just go first. I think this was a very productive meeting, not only what we accomplished today with the future of parking for our employees in Kalamazoo County, but the, the employees that are gonna happen at that new justice facility. We're gonna have an awful lot of new people that need to, sorry, sorry. Oh, Mr. Gissler, your mic's on, sorry. Thank you. I think it's cuz you and I are problem makers. We cause a lot of problems between the two of us. Yeah, that's just our predisposition. But yeah, we've got, we've got a budget coming up. I'm excited about that. As I said at our budget retreat, I think this has an opportunity to be really transform, transformational in the, the culture of the county. We've got the ability to, and as we discussed at our budget retreat, to really give back to our employees and make sure that the backbone of our organization, which is our employees, are taken care of and that our departments have the number of employees they, they need in order to efficiently and effectively do their jobs. You know, everything from, you know, the administration's office to the, the finance office, the buildings and grounds. We are all short-staffed at the county and I think we have the ability this cycle and the next cycle to really look forward and ahead and, and be a good service to the citizens of Kalamazoo County, the residents of Kalamazoo County. So with that, Vice Chair Ray.
Thank you, Chair. Let's see what I got. Just wanna invite all the commissioners and everybody else out to the Gun Violence Resource and Resilience Rally this Saturday from three to six at La Crome Park. It's right after Mother's Hope Walk, so walk and then come to the rally. And thank you to John for coming out to our meeting. It was a pleasure meeting you in the elevator. We had some fun with John and then hi to John Kerr and I miss you. That's it. Thank you.
Vice Chair Pro Tem Hepler.
Thank you, Chair. I'll reach out, thank you all for passing the stuff with workforce development. They are working very hard to try to get people into jobs. We know that we are shorthanded and we're gonna work with them to see what we can do to, to get jobs into the county and take care of getting people employed and working in all the different fields around, including our youth. I had a meeting today at Emergency Management. We discussed a little bit about it's okay to say, it's okay to say, which is a program that's been going on now for a while, hoping to end some of the gun violence, some of the other violent programs around. We need to reach out to the public so that they understand that this is important. That it goes through a system that provides information to the schools and to law enforcement to protect our, our citizens and help them get help, not just, you know, to, to help them get help either in mental help or, or physical help of some sort or another, as well as several other issues that are coming down the rail. So it's important that we work together as a community to, to raise our kids or raise our families so that we have the quality of life that we wanna have here in Kalamazoo County. I also suggest again that you reach out to those that you see out there working day and night, our employees throughout the county and throughout our locals, cities, villages and townships and thank them for their hard work. It's been a pretty rough road for the last several years and we need to acknowledge their hard work. We need to thank our military, our police, our fire, our ambulance folks that are out there every day, especially this time of year with all the issues we've had going on for their hard work in keeping us safe and making sure that Kalamazoo County is a great place to live, work and play. Thank you.
Thank you. Administrator Catlin.
Thank you, Chair, Vice Chair, Vice Chair Pro Tem Commissioners, audience. Just have actually several things to kinda highlight here. Really appreciate everyone's time tonight. I think like the chair said, it was very productive and we love productivity here. Again, obviously, the, as I stated earlier, the budget should be presented at the first meeting in September, so we hope to, to have some good dialogue around that, around the priorities that were developed and kinda how we move forward with twenty twenty-four. I did wanna address your question, Chair, regarding the pension actuarial. So I did state that as a result of the actuarial or the, yeah, the actual evaluation that was performed, we are looking at about a six hundred and fifty thousand dollar addition that we need to create to fund the pension at the correct level or at the appropriate level. So that'll come in the form of a budget adjustment that'll be on future agenda. Finance is still just working out those numbers with H R. And then I know you asked another question about how many employees could potentially take the lumps on. That's three hundred and twenty employees, which includes deferred retirees who would be eligible for such a payout. And so that is something that the board should be aware of because it's a potential future liability that could obviously have implications on the plan. I wanted to inform you, so we did, as far as the Justice Center goes, there was an inquiry that was made, I wanna say probably about three weeks ago, and I was able to work with Jerry Vanderbein on the two vehicle chargers that would be in the judge's area of the parking area that the judge's parking underground in the Justice Center. Those are not fast chargers and so the inquiry was made as, you know, can the county invest in fast chargers? And so I've been told that technology is relatively new and that it's quite costly. And so the way that the Justice Center has been designed and spect to date is that the, the infrastructure that's there would need to be upgraded to accommodate two fast chargers. Right now, what exists are two, what they call level two chargers. Those will charge a vehicle to eighty percent in four to ten hours. Typically, judges are at the courthouse longer than that or during that timeframe. So their vehicles should be, you know, charged at an appropriate level for them to drive back and forth. If we were to add a fast charger, those would be able to charge a vehicle to eighty percent in twenty minutes. However, the cost to do that, to add two new fast chargers would be eighty-three thousand two hundred dollars and eighty-four thousand three hundred seventy-five dollars. So that'd be for, for, we would be basically a hundred and sixty thousand dollars. So I think at this time, unless the board really desired, we're, we were planning on continuing on with the plan of just having the level two chargers with the, you know, obviously, we could upgrade those later. Knowing that with owner's contingency and construction contingency, we still have to construct and renovate new space within the Gold Road Justice Complex to house the new judge, new judge's offices and, and the hearing room, et cetera. So just wanted to share that, but please feel free to reach out if, if we're, we're off base on that. Wanted to make you aware that I T. has continued to strengthen our I T. security awareness. So there's another training that was put out. Everyone should have received that, so we encourage you to take it. I just took it. It's pretty fascinating stuff. This, this one, they talk about, or they interview an individual that is actually a hacker. So he kinda talks about how he would hack individuals and, and it really, you know, you could use those, those, those recommendations in your personal life, too. There's a lot of cases out there where we have even residents in this county that are tricked by what we call social engineers, where they may call you, they may text you. You click on a link, you pay something and then you can't get that money back. So please take that and let us know what you think about it. And speaking of training, the D E I Department recently published its online training, Global Legal. And so every office, so every elected office, the administrative departments, under my purview and the courts have required this training for all employees to participate in D E I. training. And so Alvin, our Director Gray, will be working with, he's assembled an executive advisory team internally to review trainings to be published within the coming months on an ongoing basis so that we can have employees trained on D E I. We've also had individuals in the community from other units, local government, townships, et cetera, expressed interest in this training program. So Director Gray has been working with various individuals that have been interested to have that training within their local governments, too. And then lastly, I did wanna touch on National Night Out. I was, I attended the, the National Night Out event, National Night Out event in Comstock Township. And just, it, it was encouraging and motivational to me. It was, I was with the sheriff and it was interesting. So a group of young children came up to him and asked him if. It was interesting. So a group of young children came up to him and asked him if They could ride one of the horses on the mount, from the mounted division. While he had to turn them down, you know, I, I was pretty impressed uses, he used his recruiting skills, You know, to his advantage by articulating, you know, hey, you can ride them if you become a sheriff's deputy in the future. So, you know, I, I was like, kudos to the sheriff on that. So we'll, we'll see if, in about 15 years, if they become sheriff's deputies to ride those horses. So that's, that's what we're looking forward to. Happy to take any questions.
Any questions? Commissioner Strebs.
Thank you. Administrator Catlin, maybe you articulated, but you were talking about the DEI training Rollout under all departments, under your purview in the courts. Has the clerk's office or the treasurer's office enlisted their staff as well?
Yes, Commissioner Strebs. So every elected office as well has required the training for their employees as well. Yes.
Any other questions from Commissioners? Just a point, you're, you're spot on with the, the fast chargers Because technology is dropping so quickly that those, $165,000 Is going to be probably like, like a flat-screen TV. It's going to go down to 40,000 or 50,000 in two, three years. You're smart for waiting. Next up, we have Commissioner time. I think I'm going to start with Commissioner DeLu Because he looks like he's rearing to go.
Well, thank you. That being said, one of the new Commissioners, I really appreciated all the presentations tonight at the Committee of the Whole meetings. It's all very informative and good information. And once again, thank you for this, Board. I think we had three good meetings tonight, as usual. I appreciate the levity. Thank you.
Commissioner Gissler, speaking of levity.
Never mind, my fault. Too darn many buttons. I have three things I'd like to mention. One, I think I brought these in a while back. There are discounts of $25 off each round trip flight with Avelo. Right now, they only go from Kalamazoo to Orlando. They hope to add Fort Myers back, but they're not ready to do that just yet. However, these expired on June 30th. They've now extended them to the end of the year. So if you've got some plans to go to Orlando, or your family does, You know, the airport director, Craig Williams, has, in his words, closet full. So, you know, don't hesitate. You can ask me. I sit with the airport board, and I'll be happy to, You know, grab a fistful if you need them. But I understand they're discounting their fares so big anyway That 25 bucks is a nice chunk to have off of a On the, excuse me, Climax Village meeting last night. One of the trustees said, I just made arrangements, and it was 40 bucks one way. Said, wow, you know, if you get 25 off, that's not bad. So anyway, I'm sorry. Well, that's because you always carry heavy. I also want to announce that the Drain Commissioner, I don't know, is Drain Commissioner in? I don't think so. But he put, with the cooperation of the DNR, The First County Lake Boat Wash Station in Long Lake, the southern end Of the lake where the launch is. And I'm certain he wants to do this On every lake that has a launch site to help prevent the exchange of invasive species among lakes. So watch for more of that in the future. And the last thing has to do with, and she's not in the room, she's taking care of babies now. Our county clerk, Meredith Place, has agreed to address my second Monday group, The Kalamazoo Citizens for Responsible Government, on the 14th at the Crew At the corner of the intersection of Cork Street and 994. We haven't had a presentation by our county clerk in, I'm guessing, eight years. And it'll be good because my group Has the vaguest of ideas of what the, the county clerk's responsibilities really are. Unless you need a license to do something or whatever. It's, it's, or register a deed, that kind of thing. So she's going to cover, hopefully, a pretty broad group of Things that have always been part of the county clerk's office. And she's going to talk, I asked her if she wouldn't mind talking about some of the things that she's now added And is doing differently than they've ever been done before. Because I salute her for some of those. So, you know, mark your calendars. If you're available at 8:30 on the 14th, Meredith will be talking. Thank you.
Thank you. They're called aquatic hitchhikers. That's why, yeah, aquatic hitchhikers.
And your Gerbil tubes are called skywalks.
Okay. Well, now, we will, we will use the correct terminology from here on out. Commissioner Mazur. Commissioner Morales.
Well, sheesh, Gissler, you're showing out tonight. You know, I learned a whole lot, Taylor Swift, you know. Anyway, I won't keep us because we are on track to be out of here at 8 o'clock. Mr. Spencer, thank you. Welcome to politics. Was pulling on him in the elevator like, oh, they're horrible in there. He's like, didn't know who, he didn't do his research where he came in, didn't look at pics, nothing. National Night Out, I did get a chance to visit District One last night. Very nice, good. I didn't eat, but it looked like some good food in there. And then tonight, we actually, during our break, got to go to Rhett Rogers Town Hall back in District One. Very nice crowd. We were in and out, so that was good. So congratulations to Mothers of Hope. I won't be in attendance Saturday for that, or the gun violence, but y'all know my heart is there. And to Be Well Beautiful Woman, I'm very excited about this. It's important, especially as Women's Equality Day coming up in, I think, about two weeks. So to see how far we have come with women's health and to be able to provide to us, because we do take care of those kids. So I'm hoping you don't hire a babysitter while Meredith is out, and you're actually keeping. Good night, y'all.
Commissioner Strebs.
Thank you, Chair. I just attended the National Night Out Yesterday at Freys Park in the Westwood neighborhood. It was a wonderful event. My four-year-old went home sweating after running and playing. But a great opportunity just to talk with the community about their concerns. So thanks to the Board for being flexible so we can meet tonight so that folks could participate in that. And congratulations to our proclamation recipients tonight. Great work in the community. Proud of everything that Be Well Beautiful Woman and Mothers of Hope do. Thank you.
Thank you. Commissioner Wheeler.
This Sunday in Texas Township, the Texas Township Firefighters Association is holding our annual ice cream social. And with that ice cream social, all the proceeds are split between, usually 60, 40, Between the Great Lakes Burn Camp and the Firefighters Association. The Firefighters Association mostly covers their costs for running the event. But the Great Lakes Burn Camp is a great cause that allows burn-injured children to come to camp for free And be with some folks who are similar to them and have Can share their experiences as going through something as traumatic as being burned. And they also provide other things like hygiene products, winter coats, Things of those sorts to those kids as well. So it's a great event. There will be ice cream, there'll be a bounce house. There will be some small carnival games, there'll be prizes, And a silent auction as well, and I will be there all day. So come see me.
Thank you very much. And with that, I will say, Beau, it is time for bed. We are adjourned.